And today, we're going to end with our discussion on nonconforming situations, administration and enforcement. And we're going to delve in a little bit to the processes in the land use regulations and some of the issues we've talked about in the past with things like delegation of decisions to staff, PUD standards, public benefit standards, some of those issues too. And then we did set a date for our final meeting with the board for what I would call a review or recap, and that's going to be January 23 at 2:30. And then we've also set potential dates, they haven't been noticed yet, but potential dates for the Roaring Fork meeting to kind of recap the issues, and then an Eagle Valley recap meeting. The Roaring Fork meeting will be on February 1. That'll be in conjunction with the Planning Commission meeting, so we can do a workshop with the Planning Commission as well as the public. And then the Eagle Valley side will be on February 7, and that'll start at 3 o'clock. And we're going to notice that and have that on the website as well so we can get that information out. But the hope for those two meetings would be to review and present to the Planning Commission the topics that we've discussed with the board, get some feedback from them, and then whatever feedback from the public as well. And then from that point on, we'll be presenting an outline of how we're going to structure the rewrite, and then we'll start planning the calendar through the end of the year so we can start drafting. So we're getting close.
Have you already talked to Ray about those off Tuesday dates, just to be sure we've blocked those days?
In February, I think so, yes. Yeah, I've got those on my calendar.
Great. Well, it's good to be back in Eagle County. Today's presentation has a little bit of gratuitous animation, but because I've been skimping on that for the last five, we actually include some animated video. And there's a lot of symbolism in this video, so I asked you when it comes up to watch closely. We'll recap the video at the end of the discussion of procedure. In the meantime, we'll go to nonconforming So just in terms of this presentation, I think Beth recapped it well. This is the last in the series of six on policy issues. This one will address nonconforming situations, administrations and enforcement. Now, in general, Eagle County's land use regulations aren't that different from most traditional zoning codes and how they treat nonconforming situations. They deal with land uses, nonconforming uses, nonconforming structures, nonconforming lots and nonconforming signs. Those are the typical four categories that you'll find in most land use codes. And for reasons that we'll talk about, it's not terribly satisfying because there's, most of the nonconformities out there have to do with things that these don't cover very well. And in Eagle County, the definition of structures is different from where I've seen elsewhere. And it excludes some certain things that are quite obviously structures in the common parlance. And then it uses the word "structure" throughout the code, sometimes inclusive of those things, sometimes not. So it's really, it's difficult to sort of think through how nonconforming structures should apply in certain situations that are outlined in issue outline number six. So in terms of playing well with these nonconforming situations, and just by way of background, a nonconforming situation is something that got established before the code took effect, or before a certain amendment took effect that said, "You're not allowed to do that anymore." So you have a right, a property right in that approval or in that property to continue using that, but it wouldn't be allowed to happen again. So that's considered nonconforming. A lot of folks use the word grandfathered for that, because who doesn't like grandfather? Well, I think in 2023, we just call it nonconforming for a variety of reasons. Some people don't like their grandfather or whatever, you know? And plus, grandfather gets certain special privileges that maybe grandfather shouldn't get. Nonconforming, we can just, we can just mail in on what is allowed and what's not. So residential density, you know, when I was a young lawyer, in 2001, my boss, then boss told me, "So is nonconforming density, is that a use or a structure?" Because that's all we had to work with in the code that was not unlike Eagle County's code. And I looked at him and I'm like, "Structure?" And, you know, the answer when you're a young attorney on the private side of that is, whatever advantages your client the most. So that's where you're going to make the argument. We shouldn't have to make arguments like that. If there's nonconforming density, we should just address it directly, particularly when we're talking about the number of units in an individual building. You know, where something's platted out, I think those are nonconforming lots. So site improvements like access, nonconforming access, access is specifically not a structure. So access landscaping, if you have buffering requirements, you know, certain widths, the stream setback is a buffering requirement of sorts, nonconforming stream setback, it may be a nonconforming building as a result, but if you get something in the stream setback that's not allowed, that's also not considered building or a structure. We don't have any way of really dealing with that. Lighting, lighting is structural usually, but at the same time, if you've got a threshold for when it has to be brought conforming, if I can change a light bulb and make it conforming, but my threshold is 15% or 50% of value, and before I trigger having to make it conforming, you'll never get conforming lighting, right? So we want to think about lighting, I think, a little bit differently. If we can shield it cheap, if we could put in a lesser intensity light bulb, if we could put timers on it, things like that to make it conforming, then we ought to think about getting lighting into conforming, particularly in places where you might otherwise be able to see the Milky Way, certain weather conditions. And then parking and loading are nonconforming situations that are, again, specifically excluded from the definition of structure and not dealt with. It might be a component of use, but it's not really a component of use because parking is parking and it's always the same, you know, from use to use. Because spacing requirements could come up, let's say you have, you know, the classic example here, because it has a statutory spacing requirement, would be group homes. So let's say you had group homes that came up before that statutory requirement was put in place, before the county had a spacing requirement in place, and they were closer together than would allow. One of them is nonconforming, right? But would you address that as use, structure? Like, it's, spacing is, I think, a different order of things. And spacing requirements is something that for environmental justice, environmental performance reasons, the county, spacing in other contexts. And so when the county gets down to it, you're going to have to, I think, as a board, decide what kind of policy that you want to put on nonconforming spacing. And then these structures and building impermanences that are exempted from the definition of structure, one of which is, I think, an attached deck, is not considered a structure. Now, whether it's part of the building, which is a structure, it looks like it's specifically excluded from that too. So I don't know how to call that, you know, in terms of nonconformities. If I have a attached deck that reaches into a setback, for example, I don't know how to address that under your nonconforming provisions. It's not entirely clear. It's not to say that there isn't a way to do it, it's just not entirely crystal clear. Traditionally, zoning is focused on, and there's a bunch of case law on this, bringing things into conformance with the code. And that is to say that in the infinite wisdom of every legislative body that's ever put out a zoning code, that they always get it perfect in every circumstance, because that's how the judges see it. Not only do you get a presumption of good faith, but you get a presumption of perfection, which I'm not sure anybody should be comfortable with. I'm certainly not, and we can't guarantee that any particular code will be perfect. And so we have to deal with what's actually happening in the landscape. We'll give you something as close as we can, you know? Well, we have to navigate a lot of stuff to do that. But this is a very, very big county with a lot going on and a lot of history. And many of the places that everybody loves developed prior to zoning in the first place, and then zoning comes over that, imposes something that's pretty regimented, as we've called it before, a blunt instrument. And, you know, that special character that makes places places is ruled out through zoning. So we need to be very careful about how we deal with things that were allowed before but aren't allowed now. So the focus, again, it assumes that all zoning rules are good and well thought out, and essentially that all zoning compliance is the answer to life, the universe and everything. So those of you who are familiar with Douglas Adams' work, 42 and/or zoning. And for the rest of you, check your sky to the galleys. Zoning, again, is a blunt instrument, and it's not possible for zoning to be perfect. So I think it argues that dealing with nonconformities in a generous way from a code standpoint is actually probably preferable as a policy, unless there's super obnoxious nonconforming uses that you just really need to get out for a reason. And most of them are.
What's the definition of super obnoxious?
Super obnoxious would be a, okay. There's case law on this. You know, the brickyard where they're firing bricks next to an elementary school is pretty, pretty tough, stuff like that.
Pig farm, yeah.
Yeah.
Resource.
Yes. So our sense of it is that, number one, in order to deal with those nonconforming situations that aren't dealt with now, some additional classifications are needed, and I think called for, because the level of investment in order to bring something into compliance is going to vary depending on what it is you're talking about. And the level of real estate that's available in order to do it, or the level of consequential damage that it does to the site, are things that need to be considered across the spectrum. So residential density is one thing that should be called out on its own. Very site improvements, like access landscaping, buffering, lighting, parking, loading, and there's more of those as appropriate stream setback, things like that, which is not a site improvement, but it has to do with the location of site improvements. Spacing requirements, where the code includes such requirements, which may, the code, like I said, may include new spacing requirements that aren't currently in place now, depending on how the board wants to sort of push things down, a delegation exercise that we'll talk about. But there are certain files, for example, that the board would probably more or less allow, unless there were nearby residential neighbors, for example, where the residential neighbors get really upset about the compatibility issues, et cetera. You have a hearing until midnight. You could solve that problem in some cases by just saying, you know, "This can't occur within 1,500 feet of a residential property line." And then the application wouldn't come in, you know, for that in that place, and you wouldn't necessarily have to have that fight time again. Those are the types of things that we do to try to help in terms of the compatibility equation and streamline procedures. And then a policy to allow for incremental conformity to encourage reasonable and positive investments. So driven by the type and magnitude of proposed investment in a property, you might say, "If you're going to invest, you know, 50% of the value of this property, in addition to doing what you're doing, you need to bring the lighting under control, or you need to do this, or you need to do that." So rather than saying you have to put the whole property into compliance, which may in some cases either not be possible, not be practicable, or not be worth it. And the not be worth it is really important, because if you can get investment in property, most of the time you want to do that. And if there's a disincentive in the code so that I can preserve an existing situation, then the character of the community that you're trying to improve, the quality of development and so forth, you're actually holding it down by holding them to standards in the nonconformities provisions that, you know, are intended to remove the nonconformity. You actually perpetuate it as long as the property owner can possibly hang on. So, you know, our thoughts about nonconformities are to bring them into compliance over time and in, within reasonable boundaries that allow for actual improvements as opposed to theoretical ones. And that goes back to the, no zoning code isn't perfect, but we know that we can make progress because we're learning over time and we're codifying those lessons. Does that make sense? All right, so this is procedure, and this is a video about procedure. And we just want you to watch this video carefully because it's, it's important. Watch those marbles as they go down. So the thing about procedures when they get really complicated is they tend to break Now, you might ask yourself, "Why do we have to watch that for so long?" And my guess is there are a number of applicants that ask the same thing about procedures?
I was going to say, that's why it's in due at two times speed, it's important to make that important.
Yeah. And I think, you know, you start to get impatient, "Okay, where is he going with this?" Right? The procedure here, it's not very clear what the endpoint is, what the objective is. There's a lot of ornamentation on this thing, a lot of pieces of it that are just there for aesthetics, and they don't actually contribute anything at all. And sometimes you can see, you know, it runs through a gear, the marble runs through a gear, and it just spins the gear, but it doesn't do anything to the trajectory of the marble, right? And then a lot of the marbles just got derailed and ended up on the table, which is the lesson, like if your procedures aren't set up properly, you could lose your marbles.
That was a long sentence.
Well, when did you feed him?
Thank you. The good news is I'm not here all week, and there's no drink minimum.
Well, there we are.
So you've all heard about the three classifications of procedure. This is, I think, typical training in terms of becoming county commissioners and forth, but there's legislative, quasi-judicial, and
Put it on your list, Matt.
What's that?
We're talking about training for new commissioners.
Oh, great.
Matt's starting a list.
Yeah, so legislative is what you do when you adopt an ordinance, it's perspective, in general in nature, there are few process requirements. You have a maximum discretion as the Board of County Commissioners when you take a legislative act. The only thing is that the result of that legislative act has to be in accordance with constitutional limitations on the power of the board, and in some cases statutory limitations on the authority of the board. And the process has to be, there has to be, you know, notice of it, it has to be on the agenda or whatever, you know? And so there are first and second reading and that kind of stuff. So there are process requirements that don't involve individual rights to be heard. And there's a very, very broad swath of authority granted to the Board of County Commissioners legislative. Quasi-judicial is when the board applies, or when a board or a commission applies, established law to specific facts to decide individual rights. So judicial, like the judicial system where that's done all the time, quasi, because you're not judges in the traditional, you know, sort of Article 3 of the US Constitution sense. And because it's not judicial in the fact that you don't have strict rules of evidence, you don't have strict protocols for procedure and that kind of thing. Standards must be in place, legal standards, to fetter the discretion of the decision makers. If the standards aren't good enough to fetter the discretion, which is not a very high bar, then they don't satisfy due process requirements, which goes back to legislative, there was a failure of the legislation, not necessarily the quasi-judicial process. Administrative is when established laws apply to specific facts, but there's no notice and right to be heard in the same sense. You file your application materials, if you meet the qualifications, your application is approved, stamp go, and you move forward. Administrative procedures, well, the reason this is important is quasi-judicial procedure offers more discretion in decision making and more procedural protections at the same time, right? So you have a right to be meaningfully heard. Theoretically, you have a right to cross-examine those who would question your evidence. There is more public vetting, there is considered decision making usually by more than one person deliberating, whereas in administrative process, one person is making a call, and the standards are much clearer so that that administrator, no matter who it is, would be, you know, 90-plus percent likely to make the same call. So administrative standards don't have to be quantitative, but they can't be, you know, entirely discretionary either. So we try to push things, standards should be clearer when they go to the administrative class, and more subject to discretion when they don't. Notions like compatibility should be broken down for administrative, they should be defined but not necessarily broken down to their constituent parts all the way for quasi-judicial. Does that make sense? And the reason this is important is because when you're going through the land use table and deciding which of these applications should be allowed, and which of these applications should be a special use, you have to think about which of them justify quasi-judicial procedure, because it requires a lot of discretion to figure out whether this should be allowed in this particular place or not. If you don't need that level of discretion, then you don't need quasi-judicial procedure. So it becomes, and when you think back to that extreme marble run, quasi-judicial procedure would be one of those spinning gears that's not actually adding to the trajectory of the marble or changing it. If the standards are the same, that the administrator and the quasi-judicial body would always get it the same way. So that's why we think about it this way, that's why we give this lesson again, even though you already know what these three things are. The way we're going to propose to cut this up would be, whenever we have standards that are firm enough that we can all say, "This is the enduring legacy of the board, is things are going to be done this way, and we always know what this way is," we'll just make those administrative approvals. And when we don't have that, where things are more sensitive, where we have the real risk of having introduced a problem into an area because of, you know, the nature of the use and the issues of physical and functional and aesthetic compatibility, those would be more quasi-judicial in nature. And then there are some things that have to be quasi-judicial because the statutes require it, whether or not they should, in which case, again, going back to legislative, the county has no authority to tell the legislature, "No, we're going to do it our way, unless you get a home rule charter," in which case you do have that authority. So, you know, again, to reiterate the point, in our view, each process step should add value for either the project or the community or both. So if a step doesn't add sufficient value for the effort, we think it should be truncated or gotten rid of. And that's towards a procedural efficiency. You know, you make things as simple as possible, but as Einstein said, "Not simple." Sometimes a better articulation of standards diminishes the need for debate about individual land use files. And we talked about this, about spacing. There's any number of other ways to make sure that you just say no to the application in advance, as opposed to running it through an expensive process and then saying no, so that people can figure out, "Okay, well, I don't want to buy this plot of land for this use. I'm going to look for something over here where I know I can get that approval easier." We want to make it easy for people to build things in the county that county wants and needs. We want to make it hard for people to build things that are terribly incompatible or create unnecessarily resource risks and things like this. And right now, I think there's a lot of things that should be easier, and there's a lot of things that just should be no. And many of both of those things are stuck in quasi-judicial procedure instead. I think that's fair to say. So administrative procedures are generally the most efficient, and there is some call for efficiencies, particularly with respect to things like affordable housing. And so if we want to get streamlining, in particular for things like affordable housing, then we need to be able to say where we want it, and then we need to push as much of that process down to staff as possible. There's less risk that the applicant's going to be blindsided with requests or demands at a public hearing, that they either can't meet or that sink the application. And there's more upfront planning where people know, "Okay, well, this is the area where we expect to see that stuff." And there's political accountability before the decision on land use is made, because, you know, here the zoning is going to be applied, right? And once that zoning is applied, then the board would say, "Okay, affordable housing that comes in with these standards being met is going to be approved by staff. We're not going to be involved anymore." That's just an example. We don't have the rules written yet. We don't expect the board to authorize a delegation of authority without knowing what the standards are. We would never ask that. We're just saying in advance, these are some ideas that could be put in play in order to create efficiencies that, as we understand it as a matter of policy, are potentially important. We would show you, we would iterate the code drafting, we would say, "Okay, is this and this location as well, does this work? We know there's going to be political accountability for these decisions, but we want these decisions to be made fast so that," you know, in a tax increment, I'm sorry, in a Lytec project, low-income housing tax credit project, the capital stacks fall apart really fast. Everything has to be sequenced properly, the decision making needs to be done really quickly. You know, if we want to be able to approve Lytec projects, we need to cut procedural steps to make sure that they can ultimately get their funding. So we will have that conversation, I think, in greater detail. So again, we, in this last bullet, we just talk about how streamlining, we would look at the value of the steps in the process, we would look at that across a swath of land use applications in different zoning districts, and then we would decide, "How could standards be improved or articulated so that the decision could be delegated?" If we can't further articulate a standard to the comfort of the board, we would leave that decision in the quasi-judicial space. Now, there was a comment that was, I think, delivered to the board through board docs, that said, "Well, you know, the board should be involved in all the decisions." And there are ways of doing that too. You know, in one jurisdiction, we had some of those sensitive decisions, subject to public notice and comment. And we've also done it where the board ratifies on consent, you know, the director's decisions for the month. So the board has a chance to review it without having to specifically call So the Board has a chance to review it without having to specifically call up any individual decision. And that's just to see if the code's working, and then we build a sunset provision in. So like, for the first year, the adoption ordinance would say, these decisions go up on the Board Consent Calendar, and then they become final, you know, after that. So there are different ways to keep track of that and to keep accountability. There's going to be, and I was describing this to Beth earlier, there's a fine line, and then I walked that back, there's a gray area between what ought to be quasi-judicial and what ought to be administrative, right? So the difference between professional judgment and quasi-judicial discretion, there's going to be overlap. And depending on how you see it, and maybe how you see it on any particular day or any particular application, or the geography of any particular application, you might have a different view of where that line ought to be drawn. And so having that sort of Board oversight for a while to make sure that line's drawn in the right place, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, that's something that we can work in if the Board thinks it's necessary. We usually start talking about that towards the end of the process when we're drafting procedure. So we just want to bring it up now, that there are safeguards that we can put into place, nobody should be too nervous yet. If we get to the end of it and you say, gosh, you know, these standards were really, we want to see how this plays out, we can arrange for that. You know, there's nothing, there's nothing about the due process clause that would limit us in any regard.
And is there usually an appeals process for an administrative denial that would go to then the quasi-judicial process?
Yes.
And what about the, what if there's an administrative approval and the neighbors are up in arms? Is there an appeals process for that?
That depends on how it's set up. So one way of cutting that off is just to say, it goes on consent, and the neighbors can show up on public comment and say, you know, I'd really like you to pull this off consent. And then you could say, well, that takes two votes to pull it off consent, you know, whatever. You can, you can create, it could be one vote, it could be two, it depends really on how the Board wants to set up and insulate those decisions, right? How confident the Board is, if you will, in those standards. And that could change over time, too. Typically, if you've got an administrative process for which notice is not given, there's no path in. Neighbors might not even know until construction occurs, right?
Right.
So having a notice and a comment period is one way of dealing with that, in which case there could be an administrative appeal, you could create an appeal right. So there's a lot of different ways to handle that. And so you, right, currently have permitted uses, special uses, right? There could be something in between those. One of which we would normally call, like in a lot of codes that I write, we call it a limited use, which is a staff approval, doesn't have notice, but it has additional standards because of the nature of the use. And then sometimes we create another category, here we could call it conditional use because you don't have that, or you could call it a notice limited use or something like that. But another step where you say, okay, well, there's some additional standards, but on those standards, we want to make sure we get some public input. So there's written comment taken and considered in the decision-making, right? But it's still an administrative decision, so there's not testimony and all that.
We do that now, actually, some of our administrative approvals, we have a comment period where the Comptep Director collects public comment if there is any, and analyzes that in conjunction with the decision.
And we have, we made a big switch a few years ago with our liquor licensing that is sounding sort of like this. We took, because we used to approve every liquor license or renewal, now those are all administrative. We only see it if it's a new liquor license or a few other circumstances.
Yep. When you have notice and comment, it allows for the commenting neighbor to be noticed of the decision then, and then they would have a trigger for, you get this long due appeal. If there's no notice, we just don't know when those triggers would occur, and that creates, I think, some procedural issues. And there's no Rule 106 for an administrative decision for, without notice. There's a mandamus action, which is that you require the administrator to do something that they have a legal obligation to do. And then there's a prohibition where you say they don't, they don't have the authority to do that. But those are really difficult appeals, and they're not going to be usually successful. And unless you create an administrative appeal path to the Board or to a Board of Adjustment, you know, the timing triggers get weird. Mostly you just have an administrative appeal to a Board of Adjustment, but usually not by the neighbor. We can build that stuff in, though, if the Board wants those. Any kind of procedures that are, there's some that are required by the statutes, but anything else, we can actually build under the authority of the statutes and create pathways to make sure that decisions have cross-checks.
Thanks.
The current ECLUR does include, and I just want to talk about the organization of procedures, because we actually talked about this before, in terms of how reports, like environmental impact reports, get approved sort of separately from applications and how there are appeals, you know, for some of these reports and not for others and whatnot. I guess, I can't remember if it was EIRs that do that, or whether it was one of the other reports, but do you have any number of reports that some overlap? We did a whole issue paper on that, I think it was number five. But there are some best practices in the ECLUR, it's not a total loss, there's a table that shows all of the different procedures in one place. It says who makes the recommendation, who makes the decision, who takes the appeal, where the cross-references in the code to learn more about it. But, you know, there should be consolidation even more of procedures, certainly there are procedures also scattered out through the code, not just in the article that includes procedure. And they should all be rooted out, brought to one place, and then rewritten. Studies should never be approved separately from applications, it really, it's awkward, it creates a momentum on the application that maybe isn't justified, and then if the application changes, you got to change the study anyway and then re-approve it. It may as well all be done sort of in conjunction with everything. The narrative in the code should be reduced to tables wherever and whenever the opportunity arises. I'm very wordy, but when I'm writing code, I'm not. It's easier to talk at length about something than it is to distill it down. And so we think when you're reading code, it should be as accessible and distilled down as possible. So there's a lot of opportunity in the current code to consolidate provisions and to take out large blocks of text in terms of simple tables.
And what do you mean by a study?
Studies like environmental impact reports, all the different reports that are required for development approvals, particularly in areas with wildlife, traffic, yeah, natural resources and that. Specific application requirements shouldn't be in the ECLUR at all, at least that's our philosophy about it. The Director should make an application checklist and say, this is what's required in order to demonstrate that the standards in the code are met. And then the Director should have some authority to update that as necessary. This was actually a public comment, but something that we agree with as well, is that the Director should have the authority to hire consultants to review technical materials that the county may not be staffed up for to review and at the applicant's expense. So there are plenty of consultants out there that can sum that up and translate the technical material for the staff planners and the Directors to deal with. But, you know, you can't possibly have all the expertise that's necessary under one roof all the time. You can, but it's way more than I think the county's prepared to be committed to at this point. And there's no real reason to, because that expertise can be found in the marketplace and applied in the county. And I know you've used contract planners, and you're currently using a really good contract planner for some of your PUD work. And there are engineers, and there are wildlife biologists, and all kinds of other folks that could provide what I would call a peer review for applicant materials, to make sure that they're well thought out and not just advocacy pieces, if you will. So statute requirements, many but not all county procedures are dictated by statute. And, you know, again, this is kind of whether we like it or not, a lot of these are based on standard enabling acts that were promulgated back in the 1930s. So, you know, we're not talking about a ton of progress over time. Actually, the state statutes, I think, on county zoning are, have been amended and patched a lot since they were first enacted, and to the extent that they probably also need to be re-edited, not unlike the county's code. But we are stuck with them as it stands, and so certain things have to be done in certain ways. The Planning Commission has to make a recommendation to this body regarding certain regulations that pertain to land use and development. For example, if you, when you adopt a new ECLUR or an amendment to it, the Planning Commission has to weigh in. So in that sense, it's important to separate out building regulations and engineering regulations and things like that, things that aren't really Planning Commission oriented, shouldn't be part of ECLUR, because then if you want to amend those, you have to get a Planning Commission recommendation, and it's not something that really train your qualifying to be doing. Subdivision regulations, and PUD regulations. Now, I'm not talking about a PUD guide, I'm talking about the regulations under which a PUD guide is approved have to be recommended for approval by this body, by the Planning Commission, and amendments there, too. The good news is these things roll up into a unified code, which is what the ECLUR is and will be. And so basically, you just run the product of this work through the Planning Commission and make sure that they make a recommendation on it. They can recommend against it, and you can still adopt it, but they have to see it and they have to make a recommendation. There are some states, under some enabling acts, where they, there has to be agreement between the local government body and the Planning Commission. And if there's any disagreement, it has to iterate.
Under their enabling acts?
Yeah, if you go to Indiana, the Planning Commission and the City Council, in that case, have to agree on every single word.
Wow. I don't think Congress can change that.
And only the state legislature in Indiana can change that, and I don't think they're inclined to.
I think I misunderstood what a enabling act is.
And a lot of times, they just get tired when they get there. You know, I've written code in Indiana in a prior life, and, you know, they liked it, so they got there. Subdivision approvals that involve streets or other public use areas in general, I think is, that's the way to qualify, the statutes are a little more nuanced than that, requires a Planning Commission recommendation. Typically, we see that in a preliminary plat context, that the Planning Commission makes a recommendation of preliminary plats. And then there's a thing in the statute called a master plan for extraction, and it's a plan to make sure that minerals can be accessed and removed and the land subsequently recovered. If the county had a master plan for extraction, the county Planning Commission would have to weigh in on it. Sometimes we, if the county doesn't have one, we require a quarry type of use to develop one, and then the Planning Commission would have to bless that before it came for the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
What about regular, like comprehensive plans and sub-area community plans and all sorts of things?
That's, I think, a good segue. Let's see, no, they have to do that, too. That wasn't in here.
The Commission has to approve.
Yeah.
Right, I just didn't see it in the slides here.
Yeah, so because the comprehensive plan is pertinent to the Land Development Code in that the code implements it, but in terms of the code itself, it's not a, it's not a recommendation that involves adopting or implementing the code. Only if the code were to address, okay, if I want a privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment, so that I could get a zoning amendment or something like that, you know, I guess that's true, too. The county Planning Commission has the statutory obligation to develop a master plan. So in...
But it's not connected to land use regs, even though land use regs refers to it?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you have to exercise your various authorities, right? But unless the comprehensive plan is codified in the land use regulations, it's only advisory.
Okay.
And if you decide as a body to codify it as land use regulations, then the standards in the comprehensive plan have to meet certain minimum requirements for specificity to satisfy the due process requirement that we talked earlier. So legislative judgment to approve the plan, if you're going to apply it in a quasi-judicial way, it has to fetter the discretion, right? So if the plan says, as they all do, motherhood and apple pie are important values in the county, and somebody comes in with a bakery, well, that's apple pie, right? You have to approve that. But if somebody comes in with a single-family home, we don't know if motherhood is involved in that or not, we can't really say, like, how that standard applies. You know, maybe you could bake an apple pie in the oven, or maybe you won't use the oven at all, we're not sure, we can't regulate who lives there under the Fair Housing Act, all this stuff. So the county comprehensive plan is then a useless document for approving that, right? And usually, for the small stuff, it is. And that's why we don't ever recommend saying that the comprehensive plan provides the standard. Sometimes we would say, it shouldn't thwart the comprehensive plan, right? That's a little easier to say, like, okay, well, the house, that doesn't thwart the comprehensive plan, it promotes potential use values, and if it doesn't promote them, it doesn't promote them, right?
Interesting.
So our current standards all require, current standards for each land use file require substantial conformance with the comp plan?
Right.
But it's not like it's down what you're saying. Substantial conformance is...
Quasi-judicial.
Quasi-judicial, but then it gives you that flexibility to say, well, it's not, it doesn't have to be that specific, because you're saying substantial.
Right, which allows you to make a value judgment every time you look at a file as to whether the economic development or the wildlife protection is going to control that outcome.
The question is, do you want that kind of discretion or not?
I think the answer, at least from my perspective, is, you want to see if you can narrow it down to a set of standards in your actual code that actually help you make that prioritization decision in any particular context. So for example, I might say, right on the outskirts of a city where I'm dealing with impacted property anyway, and the wildlife values are fairly low, then I'm going to favor affordable housing policies to wildlife preservation policies, right? So those are the types of judgments that one can make easier in a code than in a plan, because the plan's just going to say both of those are important values. And it's not going to say, like, we're going to, we're going to sacrifice a herd of elk for a thousand units of affordable housing. It doesn't make priorities like that.
About big horns.
Right, it's just not going to do it, right? And even more importantly, right, because it's harder to find the big horns than the elk. So that's, I think, a consideration that we would like to build into your code instead. And then if the plan changes, then the code should be looked at and to see if it's consistent. Code should always be implementing, be more specific than the plan. Now, and there are certain times where you might say, should be consistent, the rezone should be consistent with the future land use map. And a lot of times when we're talking about substantial conformance, that's what we're talking about, is it conforming with a future land use map aspect of it? You know, I don't see very many good comp plan arguments out there, it's usually it complies or it doesn't, or it's in substantial conformance or it isn't, people kind of take that for what it is. Do you generally get an applicant that comes in front of you and says, okay, policy EC32, you know, here it is, and here's why, and then policy...
We actually do, we get pretty specific with that, you know.
Okay, good. And then you get the neighbor saying, well, policy E345.
Yep. And that's kind of that question, is like, well, do you want that discretion?
Right.
Because there are benefits and traps to it as well.
And in a PUD file, you might, you know, and in a childcare center file, you might not.
And a lot of emphasis is often placed on the map, on the future land use map.
Yeah, and that's typically where it goes, because we can all understand that.
Right. And I think the biggest wiggle room is the compatibility and the conformance part, because it is the motherhood and apple pie, so you can, you can pick your arguments there, usually either direction.
Yep, and the due process clause allows that. I've litigated that issue up and down, and it's, you're allowed to have that level of discretion as a body. And, you know, the court's going to defer as long as there's any evidence in the record in support of what you ultimately decide as a body. Even if the overwhelming weight of authority is against the decision, the court will say, like, there was evidence, we're not going to wait. So that's a tremendous amount of power over the future of the county. But instead of, as a policy, it's on an application by application basis, which should be deeply dissatisfying, because you're not leaving a legacy beyond the project, you're not leaving a blueprint in the code to carry on and to ensure stability in that environment over time. And that policy priorities are carried out for a period of years until that policy needs to change because some other thing has come up to prioritize over it. So Colorado allows the delegation of certain decision-making, too. It's not all about forcing decision-making in a certain way. Individual PUD approvals can be delegated, final plats, plat amendments, correction plats, subdivision improvement agreements, and subdivision exemptions can all be delegated down to the Planning Commission at the staff level. You know, the county manager could be signing subdivision improvement agreements under the statute. All these things are helpful, they get rather technical, they're not necessarily, once you've approved a plat as a body, there might be some concern about, you know, the length of time before it gets constructed or something like that, but with direction, subdivision improvement agreement could be formulated accordingly. And then, of course, terms and conditions apply. We're getting by the holidays, you know, you hear all these offers and whatever, terms and conditions apply. Here, terms and conditions apply, delegations are in many cases subject to limitations, certain additional procedure requirements are imposed by statutes and batteries are not. All right, so opportunities now. So we've got the statutory requirements, we've got this notion of quasi-judicial should embody discretion, should be used for the hard stuff, and administrative should embody less discretion, it's more professional judgment, there's some overlap, administrative should be for the frequent flyers or the policy priorities that need streamlined procedures. The difference between these two as a matter of policy should be carefully considered, and we would present to you some very sort of clear options as we go through this process so that the Board can make the decisions about what needs to be quasi-judicial and what needs to be administrative, and how that looks, and whether the Board needs oversight over the administrative process for some period of time or permanently, depending on how the Board sees it. You know, we're here to draft something for the Board that the Board can comfortably adopt and feel good about moving forward. So whatever my particular policy preference might be, I'll... So whatever my particular policy preference might be, I'll tell you in the interest of full disclosure so that you know where I'm coming from, and you know that I'm not trying to, you know, hide a policy ball. And then you will tell me what to write, and I will write it, because I'm an attorney and I work for my client. So some public hearings could be eliminated with better standards. So we do think, again, hearings should remain in place for complicated or highly nuanced types of projects. For this, use is a proxy for the type of project, and zoning district is a cross check. So for example, a high-density apartment building in a zoning district that allows high-density apartment buildings shouldn't be a big deal. A high-density apartment building in a resource preservation zone should be a very big deal, should not be allowed typically, but these are the, you know, thinking about context is really important spatially, and then in terms of what that use is and whether a public hearing is necessary or not. All permissible channels for delegating should be considered for what we would call frequent flyer work, stuff that you know is going to go through the process and get approved anyway. There's no reason, the process isn't adding value if the project's going to get approved anyway. And if there are minimal additional conditions that would be attached, we could just codify those minimal additional conditions and attach them as a point of administrative procedure and remove some of that work. And some of the subdivision delegation procedures would allow some of that, I think, work to be done and cut out some steps for certain projects. Simple deviations from PUDs or special use permit approvals within bounds, subject to standards, would be one way of, you know, making things more administrative in nature. So if a developer gets a PUD approved and then finds out, well, the bedrock is too shallow in this place, or whatever, I need to move the building around, or I need to reconfigure this some, as long as it's within the traffic study and within, you know, certain boundaries, should the director be able to approve that? Typically, we would say, yes, you know, but, right? And we'd have to figure out what are those things where the director wouldn't be able to approve it. So there should be some range, though, that's acceptable to everybody, within which we wouldn't have to ask again and go back through the original process and redo all that paperwork and take up another six hours of board time, you know, untold staff hours and consultants and whatever to re-review something that's not that different.
It's like we do a lot of lot-line adjustments and moving a deck and a building envelope, and some of them are that crazy Beaver Creek PUD that requires the board an notice. But there are others, too, and it always feels like that should be an administrative decision.
And whatever we do here wouldn't impact those, right? Because the PUDs exist outside of that point. What could benefit is what you were talking about is over time, creating the land use regulations that incentivize removing those PUDs. I doubt that those big ones would probably...
Would be interested in doing that, but I think what we could do with those in particular would be to encourage them to amend that section when they come in for other amendments. They haven't done that, unfortunately, in the recent past, but that's where we could get rid of that, is when they come in to amend.
So just to keep your parking lot list of all the things when you come?
Yeah.
Let's go.
So we have three major PUDs that require, unless a property owner gets the consent of the other adjacent property owners, for lot-line adjustments, building envelope adjustments, they have to do a public hearing with the board.
Yeah, so that's, that's...
That's in the PUD guide.
Yeah, and if that could be...
Rougher staff.
Who approved that PUD? Which three commissioners were sitting there when they did that? Because that was just creating a lot of work.
Yeah, and these are lessons learned, right? I mean, it sounded like a good idea at the top of my head. You know, we're going to protect the public.
Well, I suspect the property owners up there still think it's a good idea.
If they don't agree on an issue, they want the board to just hear it.
Right, but there could be, you know, an association that handles that instead, you know, and as long as they're within zoning, those would be separate issues. There are a lot of different ways to handle those sorts of cross checks. Board time on those cross checks is a rough one, though, because you'll have other things that I'm sure occupy higher levels of priority county-wide. Not to say that these individual decisions aren't important to the people that they're made on behalf of and to their neighbors, but, you know, the board of county commissioners has a broad swath of things that it needs to deal with. And I'm sure at points, dealing with somebody's deck is probably not high on the agenda, particularly during budget season first.
Well, and they always say, we started on this in June of 2022.
Spends as much money.
That's terrible.
Yeah, and when you spend more money on the process than the improvement, that's an imbalance, typically speaking, yeah. So recalibrating application information requirements is something that we previously discussed, and we talked about some of these environmental studies and whatnot. We think the studies are really important, but there are certain ways that they can be, you know, tuned into the type of application that's being submitted. And so we just want to work a little bit more on, you know, fiddling with those gears to make sure that the county's application process is providing sort of a rational connection to the development thought process so that by the time you get through it, everybody's got every bit of information they need at each step along the way, and that the risks are on the developer and not the county, right? So if the developer says, you know what, I don't want to provide that study until, you know, final plat, okay, but we can approve preliminary plat. If you don't meet the standard for final plat, you're not getting final plat approval, it's going to be on you. I think a lot of times, local governments assume risks on behalf of developers because they just don't want to hear about it later. But I think when you get into that application process, you sign a form that says, look, you know, I'm not providing this now, but, you know, in exchange for that cost savings, I'm incurring some risk. And people, once they understand that process, you know, they can provide that study for themselves to the extent that makes them comfortable and assume whatever level of risk that they want. But the county shouldn't be requiring them to assume less risk than they want, if that makes sense. The county should just be mitigating its own risks and the risks of the public, if that makes sense. So by the time the county makes the final decision, all of the information that's necessary to begin that decision-making process should be in place. And that's not to say, like, in certain circumstances, I think, you know, a neighbor would be looking at it saying, well, I don't have enough information to know. And, you know, that may be true, and so there are some balancing acts that are going to have to be done to figure out exactly what those information requirements are going to be at each step. Suffice it to say that we understand that, you know, the education about the project for neighboring property owners is also important, and we'll look at that, too, as we make recommendations to the board. We don't know exactly how far we would go in either direction with this yet. We just perceive that there is a big imbalance currently about the level of information that's required to receive land use approvals in the county. And we've mentioned before that we think spatially, some of that stuff should be dealt with, and scale-wise, some of that stuff should be dealt with. And there are certain application types that shouldn't be allowed in certain places anyway. So we're going to be talking about new zoning districts at some point in great detail with the board, and we think the new zoning districts might take care of some of these issues. In terms of expedited review, we've just talked about basic streamlining, sort of the make things as simple as possible but not simpler, with the understanding that there are certain application types that we can't make it a lot simpler. But we do know that there are certain priority things for the board, things like affordable housing, things like disaster recovery, where a lot simpler is important. And so when we think through those things, one thing is that as we update the land use table, in certain places, certain things should be just allowed administratively. So when we make something a permitted use, what we're saying is, it doesn't have to go through quasi judicial process. So the first thing that you could do to make affordable housing easier is you'd say that affordable housing is a permitted use in these places where we plan for it. So going back to what we discussed, I think, earlier in this meeting and in others, a simple change to the land use table, while it's outside of the scope of a talk about process, it's a huge change in process from a special use permit to a permitted use. And so for priority items, the idea is to make them permitted uses, but only, again, in zoning districts where they're appropriate. So when we say we want to make affordable housing a permitted use, you know, we're not talking about building apartment buildings over farmland in remote areas. We're talking about building apartment buildings near cities and places that already have commercial and multifamily uses, and the apartment building would fit just fine in those contexts. Priority application processing is another thing that could be considered. The idea that if you have a certain type of application, it goes in a pipeline above everything else, so as soon as it's received, it's, everything else gets backburnered and those go. Special quasi judicial schedules for uses that aren't administratively approved but need to go faster, I mean, possibly to say, you know, we're not looking for the next available agenda, we are willing to displace other things, or we're willing to say, the first hour, you know, or the first part of every meeting is for fast-tracked applications, or we have special meetings on Wednesdays for special, fast-tracked applications as necessary, or whatever. And then consent agenda review of certain things to say, like, we're just going to ratify decisions on consent agenda and go, and if nobody wants to pull it off, then it's approved. That, you know, allows less expense for hearings and so forth, but it does allow some ability to take things off. Now, the housing guidelines, we did put this into the PowerPoint show, but the housing guidelines talk about, you know, some expedited procedural elements and some expedited substantive elements for affordable projects. And more specifically, you know, there are four things. One is priority permitting and expedited process for affordable housing. One is fee waivers, one is density bonuses, and one is flexibility in site design. Not all of these are procedural, but with the exception of the site design and road and emergency services and PAC fees, which are statutorily authorized for the board to waive, there's no existing ECLUR provision to implement the housing guidelines on these items. And so we think that we should put it in, we should merge housing guidelines in to the extent that we need regulations to implement them. And to just elaborate on some of this stuff, currently, your maximum density without a PUD is about seven, I think, seven units per acre, which is not affordable under any stretch, right? The land costs are just too high, I think, in developable areas of the county. So in terms of a density bonus, the base density should create that density bonus, in our view, in areas where you want to have affordable housing. So your high-density residential development areas that would be a good candidate for affordable housing should have a much higher base density than seven. And then beyond that, you know, if you want to make sure that you can have affordable and market rate development developed at high density, there are a lot of different options that we should talk about in terms of either inclusionary zoning or density bonuses that are further bonuses or height bonuses to accommodate additional units, provided that some fraction of them are affordable. There are any number of ways to make sure that some percentage of that development becomes affordable. And so it doesn't always have to involve bonuses, but it can. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we presented that your minimum densities right now, I'm sorry, your maximum densities right now, even in your most dense zoning district, do not and cannot promote affordability in today's context. And so, you know, we want to help you with that as a county by, you know, creating density allocations. And even on the market side, you know, when you get above 120% area-wide median income, you probably still have some gaps in some areas that, in fact, as I recall your former housing studies, you do, you know, up until, you know, some massive multiplier where, you know, there's supply, at least in the Eagle River Valley, I think there's some issues elsewhere. So in terms of fee waivers, there's probably building permit fee waivers and things like that can be looked at as a procedural matter. I'm not sure they make a big difference economically, but I can't name any developers that wouldn't ask for them if they...
Application fee waivers, we get those a lot.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Application fees.
Yeah, of course, you're going to ask for that, and that should be an available option. And then with respect to site design flexibility, you know, currently, like a variance or an adjustment to a PUD or whatever, or a PUD itself would be the way of achieving flexibility in site design. There are other ways to do it. One way is, Golden just did this, to reduce parking standards. Actually, I'm not sure it went through council yet, but they're considering it. They got a favorable planning commission review to reduce parking requirements for permanently affordable housing. So that's something that the county could consider comparable regulations to reduce parking. That doesn't then require a special analysis under PUD, it just says, look, we recognize that there are studies that show that less parking is needed for certain types of affordable housing products, and so we're just going to go with that. Now, you should know that the likeness of fit for those statistical studies, for those of you who remember Pearson's R squared from Stats 101 College, you know, is not real good. It gets real good from 20% AMI to 60% AMI, and we know that that requires almost no parking. But between 60 and 120, it's, there's a spread, you know, is it senior housing, is it families, is it, it makes a big difference. But it's something that site design flexibility can be built into the code and should be built into the code so that administrative approvals are something that the board could comfortably delegate. So that's kind of what we're thinking about in terms of expedited review and how to fit the housing guidelines in. In terms of special issues for procedures, the public benefit standard, we talked about a little bit before, it currently applies to rezonings. There are certain PUD amendments that, you know, feel a lot like rezonings. And, you know, we think that we should think about whether the public benefit standard should be applied in those contexts, or whether it should be, you know, there are a lot of ways to deal with it. I think the public benefit standard conceptually is very popular. And so the question is, do we build in components of that throughout? Do we create, do we leave public benefit standard where it is intact with some more specificity so that we have a better idea of what we're asking for as a public? And what are the sources for input on what those public benefits should be? Those are all things that we really would like to get further into. And then in terms of detailed hearing procedures, the ECLUR is one source of hearing procedure, and then there's a policy, which is really just a document that says this is our hearing procedures. They overlap a little bit. You know, presumably, the board follows Robert's rules and it's made its paper on procedures, and that's good. And there should be a lot of flexibility in terms of board judgment about how to handle a particular application. As long as notice and a meaningful opportunity to be heard is provided to the applicant, the due process clause is satisfied. So there's a lot of different ways that one can provide that minimum constitutional treatment. And I think the board needs to be able to say, like, okay, you know, there's only five people here tonight, and, you know, three of them are asking for 20 minutes to talk, and we think we have the time, and we think this is really complicated, and we think it's appropriate to open the floor and just have a discussion about this application. The board should have the latitude to do that, and it shouldn't be programmed into code, because if it's programmed into code, then the planning commission has to advise the board, you know, we recommend that the board conduct its activities in a certain way, and then the board has to decide as a matter of, you know, official legislative action, how to deal with its own procedural issues. It's kind of, it's not necessary, and I think a board manual is better. So we would take all the detailed hearing procedure out so that the board can have the flexibility that it requires. There's a lot of debate, I think, out there about how far the board's policies should go, and the board should be able to take up that debate at any time independently, you know, of this project. And we would encourage the board to revisit those things from time to time, just to make sure that it's calibrated in the way that the board wants it to be. But as to this project, this could go, I think, in parallel or before that effort. And it may be that the board wants to look at the ECLUR and adopt that first, and then figure out, okay, well, what, how do we want our hearings to go now, you know, based on what these standards are that we're looking at now, the new code? We would certainly encourage that, but we think that the place for that, for all those reasons just stated, shouldn't be inside the ECLUR. And we're happy to advise on these things, too, if you want, because procedures are my jam.
I have a question on public benefit. So it seems like we talk about that a lot, and it's, the developers always claim that it's a mystery to them, and they don't know what it is, and they, they want to ask us, so what public benefit would make you approve this file? And we won't ever answer that, although we think we give them good hints. So is there a better way to do public benefit, or is that, or does it need to be that flexible so that public benefit here maybe doesn't look like a public benefit?
No, we, I mean, public benefit, it's funny, because it's so pivotal, right? And it's like a subsection of a subsection of your code, you know, in the rezoning context that, you know, I think, yeah, it needs to be better articulated.
So it's crucial to us, that public benefit standard, especially if someone is wanting to do something new with property in Eagle County, there's lots of, always lots of interest and pushback, and the way to make a good project often feels like it's the public benefit, you know? If you get to do this, but the county residents get these other things, and that's a fair trade-off.
Right, and you know, philosophically, it's been my belief during the entirety of my professional practice that a code should leverage private investment to provide some kind of public benefit anyway, in all cases, not just a rezon, right? So the standards should be aimed at public benefit. That's why we do this. In fact, if you go back to the original zoning, you know, the question was, is zoning a taking, is it constitutional at all? And in 1923, the US Supreme Court said, yes, it's constitutional, because there's a reciprocity of benefit, that because my property is restricted and my neighbor's property is similarly restricted, that we both benefit from the other not being able to do something that's obnoxious to us, right? So there's a public benefit implied in zoning. And I think zoning kind of falls apart without the notion that there's a public benefit from having it. And I think a lot of people would argue that some zoning codes have gotten to the point where the public benefit is hard to find. I don't think the Eagle County system... I don't think the Eagle County system has gotten to that point, but I think in a lot of places it has. So, we would like to better articulate in every context how to make sure that a benefit is occurring, right? Whether it's a landscaping requirement or a maximum building coverage requirement or, you know, having a sufficient density allotment to create affordable housing, which is a public benefit, these sorts of things. And then in a rezoning context, why is it good to change from this thing that was designed to be consistent with a comprehensive plan to this other thing that may also be consistent, but it's more intense? Like, what is happening here? What are we going to get back for that? And, yeah, we think that could be much better articulated, and it should be actually, instead of being buried, you know, it's delete. It should have its own section. It should be like, this is, you know, something that's required when we're intensifying either zoning or a PUD. And so, here's the, here's the standard that comes with that. And those are quasi-judicial procedures, and so, those benefits can be subject to discretion. But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a mystery either, right? We should have a lot better, if we're going to use illustrative lists, they should be longer, but there should also be some sort of limit on it, too, right? We shouldn't be saying that your public benefit has to outstrip your project so that you can't actually build your project. And there should be some understanding of that. Because again, if we're leveraging investment, that investment has to occur for us to get the benefits that we're seeking, right? So, if it operates as a denial because it's not going to make the project pencil, then it's not a public benefit. And in fact, the next applicant that comes in is going to have to get something that's more intense because they're already going to have to pay for that prior failure with that new approval. Landed and getting cheaper for it, it got more expensive, and now I have to leverage that. So, you know, certainty sometimes through the vehicle of a development approval is actually better than denial. So, in terms of community impacts, we tend to be more impactful over time. So, in terms of notice, Eagle County has newspapers, we're getting down in the weeds here a little bit. You know, when I tell my kids about newspaper notice requirement, they go, Dad, what's a newspaper? And not to disparage newspapers, because I like them, and I think that, to be fair, the newspapers around here are actually very, very good at what they do. And we've been seeing, you know, reporting out about what's happening here, and it's very clear and accurate. And I think we need to be careful when we talk about whether notices should be in a newspaper or not, because, you know, that is an important source of information dissemination for those newspapers, it's an important source of revenue and whatnot. But the newspaper notice requirements do apply to more land use files than state law requires. It is not clear whether newspaper notice is worth the risk of error and the level of effort that it takes, in that if you have an error in your newspaper notice, it can cause a delay or a vulnerability for that land use file that's going to be hurt. You may have to cancel the hearing and postpone it because the newspaper notice was incorrect in some way. And there's always a chance of error in the communication to the newspaper or in the copying over into the notice itself. And so, if the newspaper notices aren't reaching folks in two addresses that wouldn't be reached in any other way, I think that that's something to consider. And so, I think it's a careful consideration. It's not a no-brainer to remove newspaper notices, but it's a careful consideration that the Board should make in terms of reducing the newspaper notice requirements to only what's required by statute and then enhancing any other messages or ways of messaging like email lists and, you know, using your website and things like that. Email lists and the county website should be used anyway, and to the extent that that noticing can be robust, it should be. The newspaper role in it, I think, has been diminishing over time, and the county should just look at that and say, do we have a lot of people that are still reading these for legal notices? And if so, then just keep doing reading. And if not, then think about the cost benefit and the risk of error that comes along with it. We still definitely do have notice requirements that are required by state law, and we would always have to follow those.
Could you create some requirement about making essentially advertising rather than the legal notice itself to say, as required, notifying you that this is posted at the website here? So that you're essentially requiring advertising without making that paper notice the public notice. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, for example, for a special use permit where a newspaper notice is not required by statute, the newspaper notice could be, check the county's website for special use permit at URL, da-da-da-da-da. The county could post whatever ads it wants to, to encourage people to look at county website for notice. And you could say, special use permits will be processed for the following addresses or PIN numbers or whatever. The county could make whatever kind of advertisements in a newspaper that it wants in the absence of a legal requirement that it notify the public, for example, for a rezon, which would be, you know, a different statute.
There are specific requirements in state statutes that require the notice to have certain information for those types of files.
Right. So, where you don't have a state mandate, you know, we, as a county that uses newspapers as a record...
But we don't have our own requirement for newspaper publication where there's no statute. We do, okay, so we could do that.
Yeah. And, you know, again, if there's a risk of error, you know, you don't want that error to necessarily delay the file if people aren't relying on the notice anyway, right?
But in the case of not official notice, go to the website.
Go to the website. We could do that for special use permits, for example.
Yeah. So, it's something to think about. And you could regularly publish that in the newspaper anyway. Yeah. You know, just something to think about. Enforcement, zoning enforcement is usually focused on compliance as opposed to collecting penalties. So, unlike a speeding ticket where, you know, it can be in certain jurisdictions a revenue generator, you know, particularly small towns, not necessarily around here, but there are certainly ones in Colorado that are flanked by speed traps. You know, the current code provides several ways for compliance-focused enforcement alternatives. For example, the notice of violation procedures and so forth, where you just tell, hey, you know, the zoning code says that you have to do this, and we want you to come into compliance, you have a certain amount of time, we'll come back out. Those are good ways, and most people want to comply with the law. There are always some that don't, but most people do, and they'll work with you, and the county can work with them to bring things into compliance. But the county code also has, I think it sort of maximizes the ability in the statutes to make things crimes. So, you can also, as a county, prosecute people for misdemeanors for zoning violations. I don't think the county does this, but the county is authorized to do that. And criminal penalties, we think, should be restricted to exceptionally egregious violations and crimes that are established by statute. And the one that comes to mind is illegal subdivisions. That's a crime under the statute. The county can't make it not a crime because the legislature made it a crime. But I can tell you, I did some work in North Idaho, some zoning work in my prior life, and I met the guy who went to jail for a zoning violation. And you don't want the guy who went to jail for a zoning violation to be a resident of Eagle County. I mean, they are pissed off about that, and maybe rightfully so. You know, I mean, if you want to bring somebody into compliance from a zoning perspective, usually that involves some kind of work that they have to do on the property, and if they're in jail, they can't do that work. And they can't earn money when they're in jail, usually, unless they're day traders or something like that, to have somebody else do that work for them. And usually, it just doesn't amount to good things. And then they come out and they're really angry at the government for a really long period of time if they weren't before, and it's just not really worth it. So, we don't recommend criminal penalties, and we do recommend de-emphasizing and actually saying, as a point of policy, we pursue civil, you know, this is really what we want to be doing. All statutory authority except as above, which the statutes would allow the county to make these things misdemeanors, should be incorporated. And one of those things is that, you know, the county has certain powers. I can't remember which, I put it in the issue paper, but there's one piece of statutory authority for county to make certain requirements that's not in the county code currently, although the county, I think, exercises that authority anyway. It should be articulated.
Withholding building permits.
That's right. Withholding building permits for illegal subdivisions. The county should just say, you know, if you don't have your plot approval, we're not going to approve your building permit. And then obviously, on 35-acre lots, you'd approve it anyway because they're exempt from subdivisions, but less than that, they would have to be platted presumably, unless there's subdivision exemptions or something else. And then finally, the enforcement procedures should be all grouped together, just like the regular procedures, and there are some certain internal inconsistencies that need to be resolved. You know, one issue is that the current county code says that there is $500 a day penalty. The current statute allows 500 to 1,000. The court should be able to decide, you know, between those, depending on how egregious it is, for second, third violation, whatever. So, we need to build that range in, I think, to be able to leverage the maximum ability of the statute. And then there are certain other sort of things that are subject to interpretation because it's said one way here, and then it's repeated down here another way, and we just want to reconcile that. Again, you know, simplification, if things can be grouped together and internal inconsistencies resolved, they always should be. So, there's certainly some work that can be done in that regard. And that's the nice dissolve to end the presentation. If there's any discussion or questions, we would love to have that discussion. And we hope you enjoyed the process, too.
To go back to one slide, I think it was 13th slide or so, talking about, is this one? Expedited review, consent agendas, as we were just talking about, those PUD requirements. I was wondering, well, is that some way to more short-term address them, say, anything that is, you know, required out of a PUD that is not part of our land use regulations that meets the standards of administrative review will just do as consent, you know, with the safeguards unless the applicant wants to bring it before the Board or unless there is some sort of public request that he's, or something like that? That's one question, but then I thought, well, the biggest issue is not the Board's time, it's staff time. Staff still has to do all that work, right? So, you can't really solve that, so.
However, I think today, it would be a matter of more discretion to put it up and say.
I think you probably could. We'd have to go back and look at the specific language.
I asked that question once before, and there was a reason we couldn't.
I think it says "public hearing" in the, in the PUD guides.
Yeah. Going back a few years, I asked this question.
Yeah, the public hearing held on the application.
So...
No, I guess one question about that, which we could research. I don't have an answer, but, you know, the PUD statute allows for the Board to maintain just the PUDs provided that they're not messing with something that runs to the benefit of the landowner. So, it's possible that we could blanket that and say, you know, if there's a public hearing department, we're going to do it on consent unless, which would be protected potentially of individual rights.
Adjacent property owner objection or something like that.
Yeah. So, we could, we might be able to massage that. We need a little case law research, and the case law is kind of sparse on it. But, you know, we could, within certain risk tolerances, we can look at it, right? I don't have a good answer on the top, but...
We can certainly go back and look at that language, though, but I do remember looking at that a couple of years ago, and based on, at least looking at courtier, as it did talk about a public hearing as opposed to Board approval, so we felt like it was probably appropriate to put it on consent.
I mean, I don't know what that takes as far as research. Talk to the staff, I would imagine. Stand up, love to get rid of all that stuff, but is that a huge research burden? I don't know, cost benefit to doing that?
Yeah. Ultimately, you know, it boils down to whose rights are affected by it, because if PUD landowner rights are affected by it in a certain way, then the county has to follow a certain process in order to make that happen.
I think I really like the direction of clarification that's going, and it also seems like it will be easier for the public to be able to read a more succinct land use regulation document, weigh in before we adopt it, but even after it's adopted, to read it and understand it and figure out what their role is. Because ultimately, we want the public to participate, to be part of land use decisions, and if they can do it by thinking about the rigs before there's a project with somebody that they really dislike coming forward that gets all tangled up, that's a, it seems like a really helpful process.
That's the hope, you know? That's what we shoot for. And, you know, we hope to get 80 to 90% there, because again, blunt instruments, right? But, yeah, definitely, that's what we're striving for.
We've got audience comments. Do you guys have any other questions?
We have one other question. So, we have a, somebody who's in process, right? They applied for a sketch plan. So, in the meantime, this gets approved, the new land use codes get adopted. Do they follow the old plan? This was a sketch plan for a PUD, so I know we're trying to push people to not apply for PUD. Do they have an option of using new codes or, I mean, they're sort of in the middle of the process right now.
Well, they'd be, the regulations in effect at the time the application is submitted would be applied to that particular application, but if it's, so for example, if it's sketch plan, we would apply the regulations in effect now, but if they apply for preliminary plan at the end of the year, when these are approved, we would apply those, the new regulations to whatever the subsequent plan is.
Right. And we would have a transition provision in the ECLUR update that would say, you know, if you are in any of these different baskets of circumstances, here's what happens.
Here's what would apply.
And here are the choices that you can make. So, a lot of times, we would say, and I'm not sure necessarily here, because there are some flaws in the PUD system that I think need to be corrected, right? But sometimes we give them the option, they pursue the old track to its conclusion, you know, just depending on how everything comes together. So, the first thing we do is we write out all the new standards with due regard to, what are you doing now, and how hard is it going to be to make that change, and what maps onto what, right? So, if we were to get rid of the preliminary development plan, for example, and just use a zoning document and a FDP, Final Development Plan, then, you know, how, what would I do if I had a preliminary development plan? You know, what would I do if I wanted to do a sketch plan? And I'm saying we're going to do that. I'm just saying that there are a lot of different ways that PUD regulations come together, and there are some traditional ways that are three steps, there are some two-step processes that really minimize sort of public hearing stuff. Everything goes into the first one as if you're drafting a new zoning district, and then everything else is administrative after that. There's a lot of choice that you need. And then, once we've made all those choices, then we look at, okay, well, how do I get from here to there? I need to do a new roadmap. And we wrote a whole division on that to make sure that everything is accounted for. And I've learned some hard lessons from transition provisions that weren't well drafted and well thought out, and I've had to help clients through those murky circumstances. So, the good news is I can account for some of the stuff that doesn't often get accounted for and make sure that we're dealing with it.
I tell you, I really didn't want to, like, get into approving a sketch plan for a PUD thinking, oh, but wait, we're trying to create, you know, a smoother, easier way to do this, but, all right, so you'll have options.
If you're dealing with 15,000 acres, right? A sketch plan is a pretty good idea, you know? So, we want to think about it at scale. Sometimes the sketch plan is a total waste of time, and sometimes it's a pretty good idea to understand, like, what am I going to do with this whole thing conceptually? Like, have I thought this out well enough, or am I just sort of building it like an amoeba?
Like that machine.
What's that?
Like your gear machine.
Yeah. So, is it adding value, right? Is it focusing in on something that's important, or is it just something that's ornamental that we could say, hey, we did this and we checked it off the list? Because we don't want to do things just to check them off the list. Everybody's got better ways to spend their time and resources than doing that, so. But figuring out what's important, because all these applications are individualistic, right? And because all those contexts are different, we have to start slicing things by zoning district and then by use, which is a proxy for impact, and then maybe by scale, which adds a three-dimensional aspect to it, and then figure out which of those resulting cubes, you know, gets this process or that.
Bet you do Rubik's Cube really well.
Only if I have a manual on how to do it. But what's interesting about that is, that's what we're trying to create here, right?
Everything's a metaphor.
Yeah, everything's a metaphor. I do have a Rubik's Cube in my office to remind me of that, so.
We have a comment from our audience, and if any of you folks online want to weigh in, raise your, so raise your hand button, and we will see you. Joanne?
Yeah, so, just as a, one point to make about the parking issue. I live in an apartment complex, and I volunteered up at Beaver Creek on Saturday night at home at quarter to 12:00. There was not one parking spot available for me in four adjacent buildings, nor any on the street, which is owned by the Town of Eagle. I had to park in a parking that's supposed to be designated for the adjacent complex. So, when you talk about, when you mention that when you're approving these affordable housing projects that you can maybe short-change on parking, the only way that that will work is if you are in conjunction with jurisdiction that owns the roads that's going to allow for Wall Street parking that's adjacent, but it's not owned by the complex. It's an issue not only here, but throughout every part of any kind of high density in the valley, when you know that the land is expensive. To put things in perspective on your housing issue here, if I built a 2,000-square-foot home today with an average construction cost of about $300 a square foot, you're looking at $600,000 for what's considered an affordable housing, and that's not the land, which might be $50,000 if you're lucky, if you can even get it subdivided into a quarter acre, and you're looking at tap-in... you're looking at tap-in fees somewhere in the neighborhood, probably $25,000. So you're looking at $700,000 from the get-go for affordable housing thing. So my overall comment for what this exercise that you're going through is, will this update help or hinder building affordable housing, increase or decrease speed up the process of getting it? So it's kind of a philosophical question. So when you're, have this chance to do this, if there's any opportunity to cut something out of the superfluous that's ornamental, do it now. And the other thing is, the state has provided lots of funding for addressing affordable housing. My question is, can the county try to tap into some of this $250 million to pay for the incremental cost that is going to be probably required in order for affordable housing projects to go through? That has historically been the impediment for why builders are not doing it. You know, we all know, you buy, you know, you build a million dollar house, you can maybe make $150,000 profit, or if you're doing high density, there isn't. There's no incentive for it. So in order to do that, I think that has to be foremost in your thing. And then the last comment I wanted to make is, you were talking about public benefit. Does a builder or an entity that forms itself in as a new public benefit corporation, will they get kind of expedited consideration if the project, you know, does it, because you keep talking about the public benefit, or you're talking about a specific piece of that development that accrues a public benefit, such as an easement to access to a building or something like that? I'm just wondering if, since we're all getting into this change and update and so forth, since now there's this new, you know, C corporation, a public benefit corporation and so forth, would it behoove a developer to go ahead and change their legal organization if that would help expedite getting any of this accomplished?
I mean, I don't know, public comment is a time for public response. Happy to address.
Oh, one last thing. Public comment. Can you write into the regulations that it is a requirement of the board to make a written permanent response that goes back to the comment? I mean, I went to a town council meeting, and they said, oh, we answered y'all, I haven't heard a darn thing. And so I think if the public is going to spend their time and their brain power into analyzing things, and we have a comment, even if it may not result in an answer they're looking for, or changing a piece of legislation, or code, or whatever it is, is it a requirement, or should it be a requirement, built into the code, to have a formal written response sent to the comment?
Yeah, we've got a few minutes, so if you want a brief response?
Sure. I think the first issue is that an affordable unit on a 6,000-squared-foot lot isn't going to happen anymore. I mean, I think if we want to promote affordability, we need to recognize that land is supremely expensive, and we need to put as many units on an acre of land as we can fit within the functional and physical characteristics that surround it. You know, it has to obviously work on the road network, and it has to, you know, be compatible in other ways and whatnot, but it's density that's going to be necessary in terms of affordability. And density in terms of dense single-family neighborhoods is probably not going to get us there, at least not now with construction costs as high as they are. So that's part one. Part two, in terms of the state, the state is looking for certain criteria within the code in order to release funds. We will address those criteria and turn in this code, and hopefully those resources will be available year over year. You know, when the state commits a bunch of money, a couple of years later, that money is gone, and, you know, it's not necessarily recommitted. We'll see how well that works over time, but we will set the county up to take advantage of state funding that's available based on regulatory criteria that the state wants to see in the county's regulations. So we will, we will look at that. There was a third, a third question.
Creating a public benefit.
With the public, right. So the public benefit corporation, no, a developer would have to provide a public benefit from the project. So if the developer says, we're going to use the profits from the project, and we're going to donate 1% to charity, you know Subaru does that, right? It's not going to get any special consideration for that, it's just going to get market appreciation for being, you know, in the process of giving to charity or giving back in some way. If they give back through the project in order to get approval, then that is not charity anymore, that is regulatory compliance. So what structure you have doesn't really matter that much, and, you know, whether it's an LLC, or a partnership, or a corporation, or whatever, everybody would be treated the same way in terms of a public benefit standard. And then finally, while I respect the idea, you know, giving citizens their response and whatnot, on a particularly nuanced or controversial land use file, there's a ton of effort that goes into the review of the materials and the development of a staff report to give the board decision-making information. And to add to that, the additional responsibility of responding to every comment that comes in, I think is probably more than the county staff is ready for. There's certainly no constitutional requirement for that. The board can make whatever decision it wants on this, but I would not recommend it for the reason that it's just, it's so much additional work. And the reason that I know this is just even in terms of land development codes, I have responded to every comments, every comment that came in on land development code projects over time, and it is a ton of work to do that. And on a controversial development file, some things may come in with a ton of merit, and some things may come in that are just emotional responses. A lot of times, you get form letters that come in that one person wrote, that 100 people send in. You shouldn't have to send 100 responses back to the same form letter, that kind of thing. So there's a lot going on there, and I think you participate in the hearing, you have your say, your procedural requirements are met, the decision is based on the record, the record has to have information that supports the decision. And as much as I'd like to be able to answer every question in every circumstance, I just don't think it's a use of resources that the county should commit itself to as a legal matter.
Yeah, there's, I'm sorry, your question.
Oh, I was just going to say, the board itself can't respond other than, thank you for your comment, and assure people that we do read them and consider them.
As a quasi-judicial decision-maker, it would be inappropriate. It would be like a judge speaking after a witness.
Right. Yeah, and there's the other context to that is sort of the framing, is the public often has this understanding of what the process is really for, and I think we just always want to be careful whenever we're talking about service to the public regarding a quasi-judicial file. The purpose of that is not to make this the public versus the landowner. It is the standards versus the landowner, or to look in that context. And we have lots of requests about time and things, the public deserves this. Well, if you think about it, it's quasi-judicial in a, a public court case, say, a criminal case, is the people versus defendant, but you don't let all of the public come in and comment and participate in that thing. It's conforming to the law. So to me, those things are, you need to be careful, just to be sure you're not creating in the public's mind the continued idea that this is you versus the developer.
Right. It's not intended to be a dialogue, is the question. Quasi-judicial procedure is not a policymaking dialogue. And I've actually, you know, again, I've been involved in a lot of litigation over quasi-judicial procedure over the course of my career, and, you know, one of them was, you know, I think we need to make a policy right here tonight on this application. Okay. Critical fatal quasi-judicial flaw number one, policy is made before the application comes in.
Right.
And then the next one, which was really great, was, and I made up my mind over the weekend that, excuse me.
And contrary to that, what I would say, too, is that what governments don't often do quite as well is the private sector, and because the private sector is competing, that's not to say that some businesses do great service and some do poor service, and that's what you use to stand out in the marketplace. So governments don't have quite the same incentive to work based on those standards of service. So I think we can let that slip in us, but still, I think that is a decision you need to have discretion over just on how you run your business as the government, how you do your standards of service. And you should try to keep them high, as opposed to just saying, well, we're the government, we just don't need to, we're very busy. It's easy to let that slip, but I still think it should be discretion, how you manage that operation.
Let's see, any other comments online? Any staff input, questions? Jokes?
I guess I would say with the non-conformities, I think we covered it well. I think that one of the things that we've historically struggled with is, the code is sort of set up to eliminate the non-conformities, and, you know, we're sort of trying to navigate people through that, and I think unless it's some sort of life safety risk, that we should help people make that investment in their property, and there's ways that they can navigate it, rather than just know we're trying to contort ourselves in the process to get to an approval. So I think that's a good discussion, and something to think about.
I would add, with regard to housing, generally, the county's philosophy has not been the unit type. I feel like we're talking a lot about density, which in my head is putting in our, in my head, a high-rise apartment building. Our philosophy has always sort of started with the occupant, so the person that owns that house or lives in that house. And so we have a wide-ranging spectrum of the definition of affordable housing. So as I think we are talking about, which incredibly beneficial, I think, is sort of a streamlined processing, finding a way to include the incentives that were in the housing guidelines that we have no way to apply in the land use regulations, we do need to keep in mind sort of the breadth of the inventory that we are trying to either partner with from a developer, from the private sector, from the public sector, or ourselves investing. And I will say one little thing to Joanne's comment. Eagle County, I believe, from a housing perspective in the last year or two, has done a good job of sort of positioning ourselves to receive and actively receiving grant funds from the state and the feds. So I think the housing, the land use regulations will position, put us in a stronger position, but we are already making headway. We've got funding for a couple of different projects, which I think we've been able to work through some of the language that we have and some of the tools that we have. This will help us a lot more. And greater clarity around public benefit would be a huge advantage to, I think, all of us sitting here in how we help developers think about their projects and meeting the public benefit standard.
I think that's a really good point on the affordable housing and how we think about it here. For example, the partnerships we've done with Habitat, which is a small family ownership model.
Yes.
In addition to rental apartments, but.
Right, and I think my point was, 6,000-square-foot lot is a really big lot, you know? And if we can pack, if we're dealing with single-family product, it should be on smaller lots than that. And I know Habitat prefers that model, because it's.
They're trying to get flexible, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because even there, they're probably finding that that model is really hard to deliver in an affordable way, but that model avoids HOAs, which, you know, some of these families are not equipped to deal with. And collective decision-making about, you know, putting on a new roof and things like this, it's really complicated. But yeah, single-family duplex townhomes, small multifamily and large multifamily, I think the, and I think there's a place for manufactured housing in that affordability equation that's really, really important. So as we look across that spectrum, we still need to offer the density to support it, and, you know, seven is still too low.
Yeah.
And we can do better by Habitat, and by housing authorities, and by others, by having zoning districts that are much more prescient than that. Now, normally, I would say in an unincorporated county, unincorporated counties should not be in the business of urbanization, right? But that cat left the barn, or that horse, I mean, my analysis is messed up now. This is my third today.
Third wadzina.
Americana, just to be clear for the record, alcohol-free. But in terms of, you know, that horse left the barn, it ran around the property, and it left years ago, and those areas around the cities are already built up, and they're unincorporated, and they're not going to be incorporated. So now, the county is in the urban business, and the question is, where does the county draw lines around that? And within that, the county has a role, an inescapable role in terms of affordability. And so to the extent that we can help this board implement the affordability provisions within that framework, and then if there's a demand for affordable farm worker housing, dealing with that as a separate issue in the countryside, we can help with that. Because as I understand it, though, there's less sort of manual labor crop agriculture here than in some other places in the state. And when you're dealing mechanized agriculture, then the agricultural worker housing is less an issue. But we'll work through those issues as well.
Can you clarify the seven, the number seven with regard to a 6,000-square-foot lot? So I know a quarter acre is 10,000, approximately 10,000 square foot.
Yeah, so 43, 560 in an acre.
Forty-six, 530 square feet is an acre.
Forty-three, five sixty.
Sorry, did I translate the number?
Divided by 6,000.
Sorry.
Is 7.26, netting out for roads. That 6,000-square-foot lot is about seven units per acre, give or take.
And seven units per acre?
Not enough.
And when you define a unit, is that defined by number of occupants in each space, or can that be, can you have a studio, one bedroom, and a two-bedroom attached, where you have potentially seven people living there full-time on a quarter acre?
The perception is that.
Does that create the density that's sufficient to, for someone to spend a lot of time pursuing a model?
Maybe. The perception is that a 6,000-square-foot lot is a single-family lot. Maybe it isn't an accessory dwelling, or something, but a single-family home is just a typical, you know, four walls and a roof, bedroom to make kitchen.
The only type of investment my father would advise me to own, no HOA.
Right, that's the one.
That's the one. That's the American dream that just went out the door with the horse.
And the cat.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cat, the cat that left the barn chasing after the horse, with the mouse chasing after the cat, saying, where's my honey? So yeah, that's ship sail. I mean, that house at 6,000 square feet of land underneath of it can't be built affordably, I would guess, anywhere without a subsidy of some sort of.
At least not in desirable locations.
Well, not in this county, right? And if I'm, if I'm looking to subsidize affordable housing, I would have to pour so much money into that one unit that I don't think I would want to do that on a 6,000-square-foot lot. I would say, give me three 2,000-square-foot lots at least, right? And maybe we can make something work, you know? 20 by 50, you could give me a 1,000-square-foot lot, and I could build a smaller home on that, maybe make that work, but.
These land use regulations don't break it down by demographics, right?
Oh, no.
And there's no, there's no sliver in there that says we need to do 10%, if you've got 10% of your population that's 60 and old, we need our, you know, permits of, if we're going to allow 100 units this year, then 10 of them have to be for seniors. There's no kind of correlation between actually what's going on in the real world with, in terms of building what is needed.
So Fair Housing Act allows homes for the aged, as they think that is the term in the Fair Housing Act, the phrase, other than that, any other sort of demographic breakdown wouldn't be allowed. Affordability is not considered in that way as a demographic, so that you can promote affordability of housing as a policy.
Unless you.
With respect to requiring a certain minimum level, usually we let markets address that. We say, we want to encourage it, we incentivize it, but the private sector delivers that housing, and if the private sector wants to come up here, there are a number of developers of continuing care and independent living and that, you know, we would want to make sure if there's a need for it, that there's an opportunity for it, but we usually don't include a mandate for it.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. So we'll see you back the end of January.
Yeah, and that one may be virtual, but we're going to see how that, how it boils down, but.
I bet it'll be weather dependent.
Say it's ski season, you know, you might want to be back.
Yeah, no, my advice is martial arts. That's the way I get injured.
This is an incredible amount of progress. Yes. Thank you for the six presentations so far.
Really exciting and really clear, helpful, how we're staying here.
And yeah, thank you for the opportunity, Sophie and Tommy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have a short break. We'll be back at 3:30 to discuss 2024 budget and property tax options. Everyone, we're here this afternoon for a work session to talk about property tax revenue options, which of course affects our 2024 budgets. And Jill, who's coming up?
Well, Anna and I are going to kind of tag-team this one, but wanted to, I don't have it on the agenda, but I'm going to go off of the agenda here to thank, thank the public, thank the directors sitting behind us for their patience during this crazy budget year. We were to, this morning, supposed to approve the 2024 budget, which was supposed to have been presented to you on December 5th. But given the changes that were made as a result of the special session of the General Assembly that the governor called, we postponed things according to the new deadlines. So we're here in front of you today for our final work session, where we want to talk to you about the changes that happened in that special, special General Assembly, get some feedback on where we should position the property tax revenue. And then we're back in front of you next Monday for the full budget presentation with an adoption on January 9th. Seems like a long, long time between December 18th and January 9th, but many of us will be out of town. You guys don't have meetings on the 26th of December or the 2nd of January, so we will just have a longer time there to accept any public comment or anything else that might happen between December 18th and January 9th. But that's, that's where we're going. So without other rabbit holes, I'll get started with, you know, we talked about making sure we all understand the property tax formula. So this formula is, has a variety of different components in it, and we'll talk through each one of these components, as well as components that you, as the Board of County Commissioners, have control over and those that you don't. So the first thing we start with here in this formula is the actual property value. We have heard a whole lot of information about the increase in values of our homes here in Eagle County and across the state. Those of us who are property owners have received notices of valuation back in April. We went through an appeals process, but the, the starting point of how much you pay for property tax is really based on the value of your, your home or business. If you look at the graph here, you can see the area shaded in gray is the period by which the, which the assessor's office used to set that value. That is a really vertical line, which means value increased really quickly over the 24 months that the assessor's office looked at. Again, that, you know, setting that actual property value happened earlier this year. It is what it is today. So that's, that's the first component of calculating property tax bill for a homeowner, revenue for Eagle County and other districts.
And Jill, do we think part of that increase was COVID effects and people moving up here and buying up real estate?
Demand, right? You know, the supply versus demand, and we hadn't, haven't been able to build a lot of supply. It's very expensive or it's hard to find workforce to build new homes. We're not getting any more land here in Eagle County. So the supply of housing has increased over this time, but, but not as much as the demand. So the price went up. There's your econ 101 lesson, right? And the second piece of the property tax formula is, is sort of a new concept that was introduced by the state legislature, and it's, it's a reduction of the actual value. So we take the value based on what, what the assessor valued your house at during that 24-month period where all properties was, values were increasing. And the state legislature said, you know, we're going to take $55,000 off the value of that home. This is a statewide number. We don't have control over it. It's $55,000 from the actual value. That's the second piece in the formula. The next thing is you, you take-
And that had been 10,000.
Fifteen, fifteen.
2,000 this past year.
And previously zero. Like that, that was kind of a new thing. This assessment rate, this is the most boring chart you'll see all day. I should have put some animation here, right? But the, the point of this chart is there hasn't been a lot of change in assessment rates. You can see the blue line went down a little bit. Residential assessment rate went down a little bit in, I think it started in 2018 or 2019. A few new types of assessment rates were added in 2021 for renewable agriculture on the commercial side and multifamily on the residential side. Not a lot of movement here.
And that rate, especially the residential, is likely lower than in nearly any other state that has property tax.
Yes, it's very low. So now, now comes the fun part, the math. So you've got your actual, actual property value minus the reduction that the state legislature set. Take those, that sum, and you multiply it by the assessment rate, and that gives you your assessed value. That's the number that impacts how much property tax you pay. So again, actual value minus reduction equals assess, assessment rate. And I've got some, some numbers here at the bottom that shows, and this, this happens to be approximate to the home that I own here in Eagle. My actual value was $650,000 previously, so that's what I paid tax on in 2023. There was no value reduction. Assessment rate was 6.95. So the assessed value of my home is 45,175. After my new valuation, the new value is now $1 million. I subtract that $55,000 reduction, multiply the, the sum of those numbers by 6.70, the new assessment rate, again, set at the state, and now my assessed value is 63,315. And just another little math, some fun with math here. The value increased 54%. My assessed value only increased 40%. So it's not exact math. When, when people say, oh, my, my property value went up 50%, my taxes are going to go up 50%. Like, that's not quite right. So here's the math behind it. Commercial properties, on the other hand, pay a much larger, they have a much larger assessment rate, so they pay, they have higher, even with a similar actual value, they have a higher assessed value. So that's shown on the bottom half of that slide.
And over time, that residential rate has continued to go down. It used to also be 29%.
Yes.
So, so you can see what a difference that makes paying taxes on even the increased value, 63,000 rather than 270,000, right?
Yep.
So I'm sorry, I didn't realize that the special session allowed a reduction in the, for commercial, the $30,000 there. I thought it was only 55 for residential. I thought everyone else was left out.
I, that was not part of the special session. That was the Senate Bill 23, 238.
Yes. Okay.
Yep. And that's seat intact. Okay, now for the fun part. Here's, here's what the commissioners have some control over. You take that assessed value that we just went through the math, and then you multiply it by your mill levy. So Eagle County government's mill levy has been 8.499 since the voters approved the 1.5 mil open space tax, which was in, effective in tax year 2003, revenue year 2004. In 2020, Eagle County voters voted on ballot issue 1A, which gave the Eagle County Board of Commissioners the authority to adjust the county's mill levy as a result of state-imposed reductions in assessment rates. So you have that authority. And then Senate Bill 23, 108 allows for a tool that can reduce that mill levy, which is the temporary property tax credit. And that had, that's controlled by taxing authority. And I'm going to let Anna get into more the Eagle County revenue, but the, the last picture that I, or the last summary of how things are calculated, this is essentially a summary of, again, same home here in the town of Eagle, a property tax bill, what it looked like in 2023 for, again, my individual residential property assessed value. We'd calculated previously 45,165 for the 2020, my 2023 property tax payment. And you can see the different districts that I pay taxes to on my home. I have a total mill of 60.611 that translated, again, based on the multiplication times the assessed value of my home, translated to a tax, an annual tax bill of $2,738.10. So I tried to take, take that information and say, well, how would that affect my 2024 tax bill? Now we know we have a higher assessed value. Again, most of that was either done in the spring by the assessor's office to get the actual value or set by the state, the reduction and the assessment rate. And now the, the tricky part is all of these taxing districts are still talking about what mills they're going to settle on. So I've highlighted in gray here some of the mills that have been, we've been told, primarily by staff, many of the councils or boards have not formally approved these mills yet, but we have an indication that, that several of those taxing districts will adjust their mills. School district is always the biggest one, you know, one of their ballot measures passed, one of them didn't. This is their CEO's best guess of where they'll land with their mills. You know, just looking through the list, you can see some went up, some went down, some of them we didn't hear about from. So this is not set in stone yet by, by any stretch. And the deadline was extended, so we will, we will know as a property owner, you'll know what your, what mills you'll be paying on, on January 17th when we certify.
So I, I think it's, my understanding is some of these are, that are lowering their mills, it's because they were tied to the ballot initiative that passed. So the school district passed a ballot initiative for a mill levy increase to raise a certain amount of money. They're going to be able to raise that amount of money with fewer mills, so it went down. CMC has always had in place that we will increase our, our budget, our revenue by whatever percent over inflation. That's been their course along the way. So I, I just think it's, it's important to understand that some of these, the Greater Eagle Fire in particular was tied to something to do with a past mill levy and it's tied to inflation. And so it's not that these entities are saying, we don't need that money.
Yeah.
You know, there's a, and I think too, if we could just go back one slide to just talk about it in terms of the, the label we put on it, because we call everything 1A, was Gallagher. We've de-Gallaghered. The, the community endorsed that, it passed because people understood that you didn't necessarily want to be tied to a reduction that's created by the state. So that was back in, what year?
2020.
2020. That, and I think that people can remember, was it 2010 that we had the recession and the revenues went down? And then, you know, like, there are things that happen across the board that are not anticipated right this minute, but trying to anticipate what's going to happen in 2020, the voters did give us that authority. And I think we called it de-Gallaghering because, just to refresh people's memory as to what they did, because everything we pass is 1A.
So again, last, last comment, or two more comments here on this one. So in, you know, in this case, we talked about the 54% increase in my actual value, 40% increase in the assessed value. That, that translates into $881 annually in an increase in the total property tax, which is more like 32%. I did, I did want to note, and I've got it here on the, on the slide, and happy to provide any additional information, but there are two programs at the state that are, are meant to assist homeowners in, in keeping their homes if, if a property tax increase affected them, if they had COVID impacts that affected them. There are, there are two programs. One is the Colorado Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program. That's run by DOLA and is income-qualified, but it's, it's available, the eligibility is on DOLA's website. The second is a property tax deferral program. That deferral program was, I think, traditionally for seniors and active military personnel, and that is a deferral program, so it doesn't pay the property tax, it defers them to a later date. That was opened up earlier this year to also allow individuals, individual homeowners where values have increased significantly to apply for that program. So if there are folks that are, are having troubles, you know, with the increase in their property taxes, these are two resources that they could look to.
And it doesn't just defer it to a later time. It defers it until the house sells.
Right.
Because you don't want, you don't want three years from now, the state to say, hey, when are you paying us back? It, it is a deferment until the property sells. And so it would, you know, if you, if you needed to take $5,000 as a deferment, that would come out at the sale of the home, not sometime.
Yeah.
We don't want people to think the state's going to turn around and say, watch my money, I, you know, I lean on your house.
Is there interest charge in that case?
It's between 1 and 2%. It's something, it's very low. So, and I assume that means you could pay it off sooner, but it would not be, they would not request it back before that. We had the, the treasurer, the state treasurer, come and talk to us about this. And I actually did follow online to go there. And it'll be posted on the state's website, January 1st. So if anyone wants to, to see how that would work and, and what, what you would need to do, if anyone is really concerned about their property, there's, I mean, I think people misunderstood, my property went up this much and that my tax bill's going to go up this much, I'm going to lose my house. There are programs, this is not, this is not a situation where we're going, no one should be losing their house. There's, there's ways to help.
Okay. All right, Anna, take it away.
So this next slide, we show, we like to show the dollar bill graph that shows what percent of the different taxing authorities do collect the property tax revenue. In Eagle County government, we collect about 13% of the total in Eagle County boundaries. And then other districts just include the school district, towns, library district, fire district, and Metro Park's library district. Just a reminder that lots of different districts.
And so even though all of the property tax money comes to Eagle County.
Yep.
That's just because it's a central collection point and it's distributed.
Yeah, our treasurer's office collects it and then distributes it back out to all the different districts.
Just to think about everybody you pay mills to, you had to write your own individual check and delivery.
Exactly.
Or your mortgage company had to do that. Oh, my goodness.
So where else do they go? As we talked about earlier in Jill's example of her property and then the different mill she is paying to the different- and then the different mill she is paying to the different districts, we reached out and heard back from some of the entities and just wanted to show, again, some of them are considering a reduction and took, to the point Jeannie made earlier, there's reasons why behind their decisions. But just to highlight the towns, we've heard back from all seven, and they are not making a change at this point. Some of the special districts are, on average, from the twenty-five we heard back from, they're reducing it almost eighteen percent total mills. And then the Colorado College is, to keep up with their inflation rule, about a twenty-five percent reduction in their mill levy.
Can I just add that that's based on staff input? So things, things may have changed. I think the last time we reached out was a week or so ago.
It's all in the preliminary. And the timelines changed with the special session of the General Assembly. So the assessor's office has until January third to recalculate their actual values and send out their certifications to all the districts. They are working on that now and hope to get it out before January third, but working with their software company. And then the districts will then calculate their mills and their certification back to Eagle County by January tenth.
And that recalculation of the valuations is the subtracting of the fifty-five thousand or the thirty thousand.
Yep, and then including the new assessment rates for those classifications.
Which sounds like simple math, but we were reminded by the Property Tax Administrator for the state that this is a manual process, so thoughts and prayers for all of the assessors.
Yes.
And their software developers.
Right, because we have, we've impacted both their Thanksgiving, their Christmas Hanukkah, and New Year's. Like, it's all.
Pushing, yeah.
It's really a mess. And it wasn't like they had an easy year so far with the valuations and sort of appeals.
Right. They're still working really hard.
Yes.
Good thing you guys have a Z.
So the next slide, we're using the assumptions we had looked at earlier with Jill's property and then looking at how those numbers can be used for options for the Eagle County.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jill.
Exactly. It's all, you know, it's all open record. You could search my name and find some of my real estate.
Right. So we have four options. I'll just go through, that's the columns on the right of this slide. Option one is following the special session legislations, Senate Bill twenty-three B dash zero zero one. And that includes the value reductions that you can see on the left and those new assessment rates to get the estimated assessed value times Eagle County mills. So this is leaving the mills the same, what they are right now, eight point four nine nine. And this translates into a change for residential property, an increase in the property tax bill of a hundred and fifty-four dollars or for commercial property, almost seven hundred dollars.
Based on that million dollar call. Not everybody.
Yeah, this is based on the new, your assessed value came in at a million dollars. And then accounts for the.
We were just hoping to have an easy number because if you're not a million dollar house, you know that you're one and a half million or you're seven hundred and fifty or something. And so you can do that math based on, I thought it was easier to do.
Yeah, I know, my house isn't exactly a million. There's some rounding happening, but, you know, it's approximate. And again, that's, that's the amount that's coming to Eagle County, the amount that Eagle, that you as the Board of County Commissioners have control over.
Right.
Just a percentage of total property tax bill.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. The hundred and fifty-four dollars is the change. That's correct. That's not a monthly change. That is your annual bill went up by a hundred and fifty-four dollars to Eagle County.
To the county's portion of the tax.
Yep, exactly. The second option is reducing the property tax revenue we collect by inflation. So kind of making that adjustment, not collecting total we can. So that would equate to a mill levy reduction. And that would increase the property tax bill for Eagle County's portion thirty dollars, thirty-one dollars for residential property or a hundred and seventy dollars for commercial property. Or option three, based on the de-Gallagherizing ballot measure one A that was passed in 2020, the max entitled amount we could be entitled to at Eagle County, that would allow us to increase our mill to eight point nine three six. And that would impact an increased residential property tax bill by one hundred and eighty-two dollars or commercial property, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
And that relates to what we lost by that shift from six point nine five to six point seven oh.
And it actually would go back to before the legislation that affected the twenty twenty-two tax year. It was at seven point.
One two five, seven, one two five.
It allows us to go back to that as our benchmark.
Okay.
So that's accounting back to that. So those are some options. Then option four is really we can do anything in between for our property tax revenues. Exactly. So on this next slide, we looked at how that impacts the property owners. And now let's look at how that impacts Eagle County government. In 2023, our budgeted property tax revenue was twenty-nine point five million dollars. And I want to show and want to highlight kind of what these options does to the revenue. So option one, leaving the mill the same, increases our revenue to forty-three point four million dollars. That's a thirteen, almost fourteen million dollar change for forty-seven percent. Option two, issuing a credit accounting for inflation increases the revenue by four million dollars or thirteen percent. And then the max entitled amount we could be entitled to, that increases the property tax revenue by sixteen million dollars or almost a fifty-four percent increase. And if we had done nothing and just accounting for the change in the special legislation, the Senate Bill twenty-three B zero zero one, that decreased Eagle County's revenue by one point two million dollars or a two point seven five percent. And then I wanted to just highlight, what do we use the property tax for? And it does fund six funds within Eagle County government. And those include elective offices, which are commissioners, sheriff's office, detentions, elections, treasurer, coroner, superintendent, district attorney, also road and bridge, open space, human services, emergency management, welfare mitigation, natural resource protection, community development, climate action, economic development, and internal services, just to name some of them. So it, it does fund a lot of what Eagle County government does. This slide highlights some trends in expenses that Eagle County government has seen over the past several years. And starting kind of in the upper left expense categories, these are average increases from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. I just thought it was interesting to see how these were pacing. And overall, the average from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four was fifteen percent. And then we're kind of looking at what the increases were after the pandemic. It was almost nineteen percent. Going then to the slide top right, this is showing increases in construction price per square foot that we've seen in some of our current projects. And overall, that's increased twenty-three percent.
And that would be projects like the housing that we are building in Edwards.
Yeah, and we're looking at two-ten, which was completed in twenty twenty, and then the CMC building, which is almost done and completed this year in twenty twenty-three. So those are actual costs we have seen. Yeah. Something else that has impacted our budgets in different funds are state requirements. And some of those include election security, human services programs, digital accessibility. It's things that the state mandates that we put in place as a government. And they're, those mandates aren't always tied with funding. So it's up to the local government or municipality to pay for the improvements or enhanced programs. And some, especially, for example, in human services, they do receive state funding for the mandated programs, but the funding's not keeping up with inflation, especially with wages and salary increases. So we're having to contribute more of our revenue to keep these programs going. So it's an added cost.
We usually just call them unfunded mandates.
Yeah, unfunded mandates.
Trying to be kind, trying to be kind. Everyone out there knows, these are unfunded mandates by the state.
Yep.
They just pass laws.
Get more expensive or putting more revenue to that, we will have to look at budgets and maybe make some adjustments and changes in the future.
Well, I think it's important to note that, that some of the communications that has come out from the governor's office saying, local governments, you need to cut your mill levies because of the increase in property values. This little box didn't ever enter into that letter saying, here are the things that we recently have asked you to do and the costs of those are going up. Good luck. So it's, it's the other, it's the expense side that lands on the counties that we need the revenues to pay for.
Yep.
I'm jumping ahead to the next box too, but it seems to me that we have another really big project in there that's not fully funded, although we keep applying for grants, and that's the Cottonwood Pass.
I mean, there, there was.
That's a really big ticket, that's a really big ticket item that the state could have said, we'll help you with, and they have not as of yet said, we'll help you with that. And that's a good example of things that our residents ask for and why is Cottonwood Pass not in better shape in its cost?
Yeah, and it's what some of the bigger projects like this last box shows. We want to do these projects for the community. And with it, we tie grant requests, like, okay, we can do this if we receive X amount of grant funding and we apply for it. And on average, we've been receiving five percent in awards and total requests. So we're seeing this trend continue, we're not getting one hundred percent grant funding based on our need or what we would like to get for the projects.
Right. All right, I'm going to try to take some of these big messy slides to sort of tell the story of, of where we've been. So this, this slide shows the, the columns, the vertical columns are fund balance. This isn't every fund within Eagle County. These are the property tax related funds. And a capital improvement fund, which we, you know, we can move projects based on, based on different funding sources.
So examples of funds that aren't here, things like the airport, landfill.
Housing, landfill, eco-transit, you know, some of the, the funds that have separate, separate revenue sources. These are, are funds that kind of share in property tax as a revenue source. So you can see the dip, Jeannie, you had gone back to two thousand nine, ten in that recession. You can, you can see the dip, we used some fund balance there. And then we, we built, we built back up in, you know, from two thousand eleven to two thousand eighteen, we were pretty stable in our, in our fund balances. You can see there were some peaks and valleys in the green line there is our revenues. The red line is expenses. A lot of those red line, the peaks, were open space properties. Those were the things that were kind of, you know, big expenditures that weren't ongoing. And the peaks in the revenue lines were the issuance of certificates of participation in two thousand fifteen, which essentially refinanced and upgraded the Justice Center. And then in two thousand nineteen, which built two-ten, the housing project. So those were, those, that's why there were, were revenue peaks there. But generally, you can see that the green line, if you just look at the trend line, which is the shadow line behind it, the revenues were growing faster than expenses. And that explains why we were able to save, save some money in, in two thousand nineteen and twenty. The, this next slide shows kind of, all right, we were saving money, kind of had some ideas of how we were going to spend it. And then March twenty twenty, COVID hit and we put on the brakes, right? We didn't know what was going to happen. We, you know, we didn't know from a, you know, from a disease perspective or a cost perspective. We didn't know if we were going to have visitors, like what was going to happen to our sales tax. So we, we slowed, we slowed some of our programs. We put some early retirement, we did some vacancy controls to, to kind of keep our expenses low. And then all of a sudden, we had all of these demands. So we hired, we, you know, we filled to those vacant positions. We, we hired people to replace those that had retired. And the demand on services increased. We got two big revenue sources. We got some ARPA funding in two thousand, we received it in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And we were plant, we'd been planning on, you know, what are we going to do with those, with that funding? So you can see in two thousand twenty-three, our estimate in our budget for two thousand twenty-four, now we're spending it. We're spending it on Eagle Valley Trail construction, the Freedom Park Building, and your strategic priorities. But the, the real gist of, of this sort of now era is our expenses are now growing faster than our revenue.
Jill, these fund balances include things like sales tax and any other revenues. They're just the fund balances that have property tax in them.
Yes, yep.
So I just want to be clear that the Freedom Park Building is really mostly our election center.
Yes, and the election security, yep.
And some housing, but, I mean, it's, it's a really, it's a really big push to, to be able to provide, you know, a place for our elections to take place and with the security needed. So I just don't, when it says Freedom Park Building, I don't know that everyone understands.
The election center.
The election center or whatever we're calling it, you know, it just, the general public doesn't know what that, that Freedom Park Building is.
Yep. And then, you know, what's next? And I, you know, projections and forecasts are projections and forecasts that based on some assumptions. We're, we're assuming that revenue growth will slow. We've seen that in our sales tax revenue, you know, it had been growing. You know, every month, we would, we would get their report and we'd be like, can you believe it? And that's great because now we can reinvest it in a secure election facility. But we, we've seen that slowing. It's not dropping precipitously, it's slowing and flattening. So we, we assume that will continue. We've programmed in here because, again, we, we do projections to, to help us make decisions. And there will be another reassessment cycle in two thousand twenty-six. We're assuming values are going to come down, again, flatten, not, not sink, is our assumption here. So the combination of all of our revenue sources, we're, we're projecting a decrease in two thousand twenty-six. We're saying no expenditure growth. Now, we know that, you know, the costs of things like cleaning and, and security and IT contracts, we know that, that goes up every year. We know that we have to continue to pay our workforce appropriately. So that zero growth doesn't imply that we will continue, you know, paying the same bills at the same rate. It implies that we're going to have to make decisions about what's most important to us as an organization. But that's what we have in this projection.
And the next tax valuation will be in June of twenty-four.
Correct.
Which will take effect in twenty-five.
And it's likely that. Revenue for twenty-six.
That will go down compared to the current one.
Yeah.
Unknown, but.
Yeah, we haven't seen, I don't think we've seen real estate prices come down. There are fewer transactions, higher interest rates generally in, in a balanced economy drive real estate prices down. We haven't really seen that yet, but I, I have been bad at my predictions, so I'm.
I don't find that to be true. I think she does an awfully good job of predicting and giving us options.
I think she does an awfully good job of predicting and giving us options.
But we just don't know. We don't know.
Uncertain revenues and certain expenditure growth.
I do have some open space purchases in this chart. You know, they have been in savings mode since their big purchase in 2017 and then smaller in 2019 or '20. But they're actively looking for new properties. So we anticipate some will happen during this timeframe. And then looking out to, you know, if we go through 2028, that fit nicely on the chart, no real rhyme or reason. But we look pretty good through the end of 2027. We still have 25% of our expenditures in our fund balance, which is our target. But after that, we're going to have to start making some. We're either going to have to generate more revenue or decrease our expenditures.
And when you, your yellow box that says full property tax amount, that is not the max, but it's keeping with the 8.994.
Yes, yes.
So anything that we did that was less than that would cause this to drop off below that zero line faster.
Yes.
Because by 2028, we're showing negative fund balances.
In some, and, you know, that's, those are the Public Health and Human Services. We could combine those all together. So the below zero doesn't scare me because we won't let that happen. It's against budget law. It's the overall shrinking from, you know, to $12 million. That feels uncomfortable.
It's, yeah, not a fiscal responsibility move to do.
So this was a lot of data, but I want to just make sure, you know, we're thinking about kind of how we got to this place with really strong fund balances. It was not an accident. It was planning for these big items. And now we're, so we were saving. If you think about your personal expenditures, like you want a new car, you save for a little while, right? And then you write a big check, you know, whether it's a new car or a furnace. And, you know, it feels kind of uncomfortable when you write that big check. But we're investing in the community and that's, you know, I think our, I've heard you all say in different words, but investing in the community. We're not, you know, we don't want to be a bank where we're holding extraordinarily large amounts of money. But we've got plans to invest back into our community. So that's a lot, that was a really long way of saying that.
And we've made those investments in our strategic priority areas, housing, childcare, climate issues, natural resources, transit, airport.
Fire. Okay, so there's a lot of words on this slide. But, you know, we wanted to give you a recommendation and we're giving you a range, okay? As finance professionals, you know, we consider the maximum recommendation, the $43.4 million, which is keeping the mill levies complying with Senate Bill 23B-001. So the reduction in value, the lower assessment rate, but maintaining Eagle County's mills of 8.499. And then as a minimum, as we kind of worked through our budget process, we can get comfortable with that, an inflationary increase, which is, equates to $33.4 million in property tax. It's a 13% increase from the 2023 property tax. So that's kind of the range that you're working within. And, you know, we've outlined, you know, whatever number that is, 10 or 12, things that you can do with that $10 million, including offering a temporary property tax credit. That tax credit has to be distributed equally to all property owners. So it essentially would show up on a property tax bill. You know, you paid Eagle County.
But at the lower, as a percentage, right? Not a?
It'll show the lower dollar amount. So, you know, essentially, if, thinking back to my house here, the $585 minus 150, and I'll end up paying 380. I don't remember what the numbers were. But that's how, you know, you as a property tax owner would, or the property owner, would pay that net amount, the smaller amount. The homeowners, you know, regardless, based on their value, the assessed value would get a portion of that refunded.
And just for the Eagle County? Because each district makes their own. And Jill, you said it has to go back to all property owners. So we know that your house is maybe 2,000 square feet or something like that, 1,500. Some houses in Vanland Beaver Creek are worth, say, $30 million or $40 million. They would get that proportionately larger refund of all of those tax dollars would go back to those homes, right?
We're not allowed to do it based on need, based on, because part of the HH mess was about senior tax exemption. And I know that some of the county commissioners around the state have struggled with trying to find a way to provide relief for certain populations, especially the seniors. But that's not something we're legally allowed to do.
Right, there is an equalization clause in, I believe it's the Constitution, that says all property owners must be treated equally, you know, based on their valuations.
Uniform.
Uniformity clause, thank you.
The other important thing is that we're not allowed to do it based on homeownership, like residents. Like, okay, these are people who live here. Because the difference between people who live here and people who own a second home here or a third home here, that we're not allowed to just say it's for our workforce or our residents.
Right, and we don't know that in, like, we, when you buy a home in Eagle County, you don't have to tell, you know, the assessor's office. You might have to tell your lender if you have a mortgage on your home like I do. You might have to tell your lender that you're going to live there, but you don't have to tell the county what you're going to do with it. So you could live in it, you could visit twice a year, you could short-term rent it, long-term rent it. The county doesn't know that information.
Can I go back to the first bullet? Because I got a little lost in this is Senate Bill B1, you know, the special session. Is that, does that include our de-galigering measure or no?
No, it does not.
So part of the reason for such a high property assessment value in resort communities has to do with this international market and people owning second, third, and fourth homes here. But part of the benefit of that is that we do get property tax from those large homes and those big value homes. Do we, I know we don't know where people live, but do we have any sense of what proportion of our total property tax revenue comes from second homeowners, from people who don't, who aren't workforce sorts of folks?
So the only measure we have, which is not perfect, but it's sort of a proxy, the assessor's office is able to look at the valuation by zip codes. So in-county zip codes, out-of-county zip codes. It's not perfect because, you know, I may have a, you know, a mailing address in Denver where my accountant lives. I don't, but I might. So it wouldn't maybe capture that. But if we believe that that is the right proxy, it's about 50/50 for the number of in-county versus out-of-county property owners. But the valuation, the assessed valuation of those out-of-county owners is 63%, and the in-county owners is 37%. So split pretty evenly on the number of units owned. But the out-of-county owners are paying a significantly higher portion of property tax or they have a much higher valuation.
That means any rebate that we were looking at doing or credit would go to about two-thirds to out-of-county property owners. So it's sort of a balance of investing in things like affordable housing, things that help our residents using some of that money or returning it to non-Eagle County residents.
Yeah.
That is an interesting way to look at it too. It's because we, if you think about what you get as a savings on a lower amount as a local resident, and that property tax versus the value you get in community service, you're getting two-thirds discount on services.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Unless it's returned.
So that's, you know, that's really what we have for you. I think the last piece we wanted to just highlight is, you know, we, regardless of what direction you give us to present to you in your budget next Monday, we know that in 2024, we've got to find ways to make sure our revenue trend line and our expense trend line are even. So we, you know, we've got a plan to work on that throughout 2024. We also wanted to make sure you were thinking about some of the unknowns regarding future ballot initiatives. We know there will be at least one initiative on the 2024 ballot. There will likely be more than one. Another part of the special session, there was a House bill, House Bill 23B-1003, set up a property tax task force.
Blue Ribbon.
Blue Ribbon.
To look at property taxes throughout the state of Colorado. They are tasked to meet from December until March and come up with some recommendations in March. Again, we don't know what's going to come out, what's going to come out of that. The Initiative 50, which is on the ballot, intends to set, you know, based on statewide measures, set a maximum increase of 4% on property tax revenue. So not thinking about any costs and mandates and things that need to be funded by county government. Again, looking at a statewide or trying to solve using a statewide calculation. So that could have impacts on that projection graph for sure. So that's all we've got. I'm going to go back to that uses page and, you know, would love to hear what you guys want to see in the budget that we present next week.
So if we are thinking about this connection with housing because that's where these property taxes are coming from, and thinking about the unknowns and the risks of doing something now, not knowing what's going to come out of the legislature or out of the ballot box next year, we would have the opportunity to put more money into things like our bold housing moves for rent relief or paying, we do some paying of first of last month's rental for people trying to get into a home or down payment assistance or that kind of, that could be a potential use to try and alleviate the burden.
This conversation reminds me so much of past, you know, they came from the state and there's going to be a valid question around, "Do we really refund the Tabor refund?" And everyone's going to get $54 back from the state? Or can the state keep it and work on these projects? And I just, I see, you know, this, I'm sorry, I can pick on you, but your $150. We're not, you know, you're not going to get Cottonwood Pass paved. But we could make a dent in some of these really big projects by pooling that money together. And I just, I think you've done a really good job of laying out all of our options and all of the risks. I think we should be spending a lot of communications time on those two programs that we talked about, the Colorado Emergency Mortgage Program and what is it called?
Tax Deferral.
Deferment Program, the Colorado Deferment Program.
Yeah, you have it on Slide 12. They've got it listed on Slide 12. Those are there if anybody's got those at home too.
Thank you, I didn't see that on Slide 12.
I think it's on two slides, actually.
Yeah, 12 and 13, or 12 and 11.
You know, we should be making it, oh, yeah, I did see that. We should just be making it easier for people so they don't, you don't have to go figure out where DOLA is. You know, like how to actually link to it. I mean, I did follow the links to the Colorado State Deferment Program and then I hit a deadline, a dead end of, you know, it'll be available in January. But the state treasurer was really talking that up when he was here with us, you know, just in terms of, nobody should be concerned that they're going to lose their house. They have an opportunity here. But I just, I still keep hearing the arguments about the Tabor refunds. And I just think that there's so much that the county residents are saying, "Please do this and please take care of this," that we should. And I have to say, we have investigated every way possible to help out certain populations. And it's just not, you know, if it was available to us, we would take that to help our seniors, help our really at-risk populations. But I think, I would like to see one of the bullets on that last slide there to be a beefing up of the rental assistance program, which is right now limited to people getting their first apartment. You know, maybe it's something we can provide. I don't know. I am so concerned about our future of what's going to happen with the state's Blue Ribbon Task Force. What are they going to suggest? What's going to happen with the market, the whole? I just, I'd hate to see us make a decision that, when we, then there's so many unknowns.
Well, and the rental assistance could, I mean, we've done a good job of trying to think of how to keep our workforce in their homes because that's a lot cheaper than building new. I had a correspondence recently from a young woman whose rent was going up $200 a month. She wasn't certain if she could stay there. There's no place else to go. But, you know, a $2,400 a year difference to keep someone in the local workforce is a lot more doable than building, you know, a $500,000 home, if you could even do that for someone. So, yeah, I think adding that to that last slide would be good too. And I look at, I mean, the three big things are the unfunded mandates, things that we have to do that are expensive, the risks that we're facing because of all the unknowns in 2024. Something is going to happen with the Blue Ribbon Task Force, with the legislature, with the ballot box. We don't know what. And that may be to our benefit or to our detriment. So we need to position ourselves the most strategically as we can for that. And then Slide 17, that shows our declining fund balances based on, I think, some really robust services that the county provides. It's hard to think about what would we not do because what we're doing is important, important to the people here. So those three things lead me to want to keep the 8.499 mill levy, keep our current mill levy, have this discussion again mid-year. And again, at the end of next year, what's happening?
Yeah, this doesn't have to be a once-a-year thing.
Right.
When the Blue Ribbon Task Force or the legislators come out with something, we can certainly revisit this.
Right.
Yeah, this, I think what we've seen in the past years that we've had, the community acknowledging the investments that local governments make. the investments that local governments make, the county had passed the lodging tax, which funds childcare, housing, our degalagering, recognize the value of the, the government investing in things that the market can't or won't. We have for quite some time had lots of policies that encouraged revenue growth in the community through all sorts of ways, but a lot of that was through just the free market. And the free market doesn't build roads and hasn't been creating housing and it hasn't been, I don't know, creating the structures that provide childcare. And that was a few years ago, and I was running for reelection in the Chamberhead Questions. I've told this story before, but they said, well, how do your values as an elected official align with chambers' political priorities? And I'm like, your political priorities are, oh, transit, childcare, healthcare, and housing. Like, I think you've got it backwards. Those are our priorities. You're just now finally realizing that the market, the community needs these things and the government is the one that provides them. And so we've been very successful investing in those things and, and we've seen what success we've had with them, the community has had. And I think we need to continue investing in those things where the community cannot do it for itself.
I, I think it would be helpful to talk a little bit about the, the ballot Initiative 50 that is probably coming, because they collected all the signatures and are getting it on the ballot, that would limit our revenue to a certain.
4%.
4%. So I think if we intentionally lower our revenue right now, and then that 4% gets applied to the lower revenue, that's like a double whammy of what, what do you want to get done, right? Am I interpreting that correctly?
That risk, that high risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good. I mean, Matt talked about investing in the community and you're talking about protecting the community from risk. It feels as, as enticing as it, as it is to say, let's, let's lower our little portion of the property tax bill. It's not going to help people very much and it doesn't protect the county residents in the future, I think.
All right. Well, that's what we will include in the budget presentation. I'll, I'll check in with Kim. I, you know, there, there are two options from, from an expenditure side, if, if housing is the one and, and, you know, maybe some you can think about.
That's where he's trying to.
You know, we might, I don't think we can build a program in the next six days.
No.
But, but we could, we could, we could put a placeholder so that we, you know, as we build a program, we have that funding available.
And this, this is a work session. We do have a public budget hearing, so we'll take comments then or between now and then.
Yes.
Because we're, we're talking.
Yeah.
We are.
Thank you.
Clarification questions?
Appreciate it.
Two clarification questions?
Oh, we can do this after we're done with the meeting.
Yeah, I think we will close the meeting so people can go and then we'll get your questions.